Okay, it's four o'clock. We're going to start the work session for the Hood River County Commission for July 19, 2021, in person for the first time in a long time. First up today is the COVID-19 update. Health Department.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us, Trish?
Yay, yes, I can. I had signed in and then I couldn't hear anything, couldn't see anything, so I exited and came back in. It seemed to work. So I hope you're doing well today. I'll just give a quick update of our numbers. So far, we've had 1,240 cases, 50 hospitalizations, and 34 deaths. Right now, we have seven active cases and a handful of contacts with those. So last week, we gave 40 COVID-19 vaccines through the Health Department, and that was at our, in our office. And also, Darren, where did you go? There's been so many places, so.
Last week, we did a pop-up in Odell with Gorge Brown's Mobile Market.
Yeah. And along with WIC, am I correct?
Yes.
WIC Services at the same, same time. So I don't know if any of you have been on the Oregon Health Authority Dashboard site, but they've changed their dashboards yet again. But we expected that. They have changed their goal to reach 80% vaccinated in the state by August 31st. As of today, Hood River County is at 73.6%, which is up 0.3% from last week. They're estimating that we need about 1,209 vaccines provided to reach that 80%. So we haven't had much change in the number of variants that we've been seeing in the region and our region, including Hood River, Wasco, Sherman, and Gillum Counties. And so far, we've had 13 variants show up. We've had four of the Epsilon and nine of the Alpha. The Alpha is considered a variant of concern, and the Epsilon is, is a variant of, of interest. So far, we haven't seen too much of that. So far, in the state, the state is reporting 43 cases that have tested positive for the Delta variant, and so far, no Lambda variants, which is the, the new variant that they're most concerned about. So Darren, do you want to go ahead with what's happening in the future?
Sure, thank you. We have a few upcoming pop-up clinics happening. This week, we'll be at the Hood River County Fair on Friday, July 23rd, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Oregon Health Authority's COVID Response and Recovery Unit, or the CRE Unit, they'll be taking a mobile unit there. So the Health Department and One Community Health and the next door will be providing wraparound services, other resources, and helping get the word out that we'll be doing vaccinations there. We also will have a presence at the Families in the Park Concert Series, happening in August at Jackson Park. So we'll be doing vaccines there, ideally targeted at the 12- to 17-year-old age group, but also families. We'll be there August 5th, which is the first evening of the concert series, and then also the last evening, which is the 26th. And that's to hopefully be able to do second doses for anyone that we vaccinated the first time. So we'll be there from 5:30 to 7:00 before the music starts, and I'm happy to send more information when we have flyers made.
And what about the mobile, the MVU that was recently in Wasco County?
Yeah, so they just finished in Wasco County, the mobile unit from FEMA, and it will be coming to Hood River County likely at Wyest Middle School from August 2nd to August 11th, so a much shorter time than it was in Wasco. They'll still be doing Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson shots there. And once they're gone, we at the Health Department and One Community Health can help with second shots, since they won't be here long enough to capture both. But we're hoping that can capture some of the folks working in the mid to upper valley.
And currently, the majority, the vast majority of the cases that we're seeing are in unimmunized individuals, greater than 90% right now. Are there any questions?
Arthur? Yeah, I've got a few questions. First of all, you said that 80% is the new target, and I'm sorry, did you catch the date? What date was that?
August 31st of 2021. They'd like to see it at 80% before school starts.
80% of what, what age group? Is this above 18, or, or do they not say it?
Well, it's, it's reported on the 18 and over. So for today, it's 18 and over. So, yeah.
And you said we needed 1,200 more to get there, is 1,200 more vaccinated people?
1,200 additional people?
Okay. Has there been any indication that they're going to address the issue of not counting people who are vaccinated outside of the state? Because we have roughly 1,200 people in Hood River County who are vaccinated in Washington State.
Yeah, so far, they have not integrated that data. I don't think they've gotten it by individual person so far. They've got numbers. But as, as far as I know, they're still working on, on that data sharing agreement that they've been working on for years. Excuse me.
It seems to me, Trish, that if we have 1,200 more people who have already been vaccinated, it's going to be hard to get that 1,200 additional people.
Right, because we're vaccinating people a second time.
Right. And they don't, you know, they count number of people that have gotten first vaccines, but they've also report the number of people who've completed their doses. So it does make a difference how it's reported, whether by dose or by individual. So I'm, I'm not concerned. I'm pretty sure that we're, we're very close, and it's not just those out-of-state people that aren't being counted. It's those, the veterans who've been immunized through the Veterans Services and people that have been immunized through the corrections, correctional facilities. So I'm, I'm pretty sure we're, we're much higher than what we, what we show from OHA.
Trish, there was a footnote on the OHA website that said that they're now including the, the prison population and the Veteran Services population.
Okay, well.
When they do the calculations, their stats. They've been doing that for about a month or so, but the out-of-state people, they're not doing, which of course, for us, we're by far the largest in the, out of all 36 counties, we're way higher percentage than anybody of people who've been vaccinated that way. But I guess, you know, it is what it is.
Yep.
But let me ask about the pop-ups. How, how, what's, how effective have those been? Have we been getting, you know, folks to show up? Have they been accepting the vaccine?
It's been a slow turnout. It's definitely slower than it was, you know, each week that goes on, it gets a little bit slower. At the one in Odell that we did last week, we immunized three people, but two of whom were under 18, and I don't know that they were people who would have been able to come into our clinic in Hood River. So in that respect, I think it's good to keep having pop-ups in, outside of some more populated areas, and also just at events that people are going to anyway. But yes, it's, it's gotten a lot slower, but we're definitely still focused on just every shot counts, everyone makes a difference. And we see the lowest vaccination rates really among the 12- to 17-year-olds. So I think we're really invested too in going to family, making every event family-friendly in some way. I'm also seeing the case rates are most common over people 40 and under, so it's just good to keep that in mind when we're designing these pop-ups, is we really need to get the younger and younger generations vaccinated. So that's what we're focused on.
Well, that's great, because even though it may be the, the age range that we have the fewest people vaccinated, we're number one in the state in that age range, so you're doing better than anybody else is on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, when, when the younger age groups come into the EUA services and we're able to provide vaccine for those school-age kids, the younger school-age kids, I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get there. It's unfortunate that school ended when it did, because I think school is the perfect place to get these teens vaccinated, because they're there and the vaccine is there and available to them.
So my last question is about Cascade Locks. Cascade Locks was lagging pretty considerably in earlier stats. I haven't looked recently, but have we made some progress there, or do we have some targeted outreach for Cascade Locks?
I can answer that. Yes, I did see, we've been looking at zip code data, so we're able to see by the zip codes in Hood River County, the vaccination rate. So Cascade Locks is quite a bit lower. One Community Health just held another pop-up there last week at Thunder Island Brewing. I haven't had a chance to check in how it went, but we've been trying to have some sort of presence there at least every month to make sure there's a vaccination option and making sure that everyone's getting their second doses as needed as well. Because it's, as we know, especially with the variants going around, I'm really invested in everyone getting their second dose if they need it to.
Is Cascade Locks one of those places where people cross the river? Because it's closer to go to Stevenson.
We don't know that. That, the data doesn't, because it's only aggregate data that they won't, we don't know who the people were, so we just know that they're from this county. We know what county they got, or state they got vaccinated in. That's the only data that seems to be provided.
I guess I'd be looking at Clicketown County versus Skamania County, seeing.
Yeah, most of it was Clicketown, as I recall, but I have to, I'll go back and take another look now that you mentioned it.
But that should.
That's interesting, yeah.
Should correlate.
Any other questions? Commissioner. Good work.
Thank you. Keep it up. You've done great. Hang in there. Go 80.
Okay, next up on our list for a work session, agenda, strategic planning goals update. Jeff?
Yes, thank you. I had originally planned that doing August, but because this is related to the ARPA funding, I thought it would be good for you to do this. So I'm just going to kind of go through a sheet that was in the package and talk a little bit about the items that are within this plan. This is meant to be a 50,000-foot kind of look at this stuff in our initial plan, although we do have work going on, some of these have been going on since. So we just kind of take down through the list here, talk a little bit about some of these items, and start at the top. With goal number one, which is to modernize the county's organization and its own prisons in a lot of areas. Because a couple of, well, there's actually three things specific here I want to talk about. Number one and number three, and are the actions. There are a couple of ARPA-related funding requests that are associated with those. One is the information technology assessment, the other one is organizational resiliency assessment. And really, the resiliency assessment is designed to look at our relationships and systems and our cross-departmental supports, and see if there's ways to improve. Really need a set of outside eyes to come in and look at our departments, how they're functioning, and how they function across departmental lines. So that's really what that's geared towards. And as it relates to pandemic, clearly, if we have food across departmental supports, our responses are going to be for us. So I think that's a good thing, we're able to do that. And I mentioned the information systems assessment. The county has undergone a great deal of change in the last 15, 16, 17 months as it relates to technology, which is a great thing. But it would be really good, again, to have some outside eyes to step back and see what we're doing, whether we're doing it well, to make sure the security and make, make sure that we are optimized in terms of sustainability. Probably using what we have, the extent of possible use. Sometimes, again, it's nice to have outside eyes on that. Just we got our head down, we're going, we hope this works. Jeff, thank you. A moment, I'm getting notes. If you are interested in hearing this, adjust your mic or ensure that it's on the broadcast. All right. Is that better?
You need a bigger handle.
Okay, so then I wanted to move to item 1.2, which is about retention recruitment. Actually, Cheryl has been working on RFP, we've gone back and forth for that, did the streets today, to do our comp class and market compatibility study. So that's, that's already started, and that is actually funded and currently funded, so that work is, is already underway. The last couple of items on there, I didn't put dates in, and I, I think probably what's going to need to happen, so it's going to need to be discussion involving the board, Cheryl, that maybe get a good handle on exactly what these things are. And then once we know that, maybe assign some dates to figure out who's different. Moving on to the second goal, which is foster financial stability and strength.
Actually, I had a question on 1.5.
Okay.
Just, just as a reminder, because it's been a while since we went through this. They assess current public safety events. Are we talking about public safety events? Are we talking about like natural disaster response and like, what's a public safety event?
Well, that's the way, I, in my mind, this is an open discussion, so I think it's whatever we decide it is. And right now, I don't have a lot of clarity about exactly what that is, so I think that needs to be discussed.
Okay. I was just assuming it was natural disaster pandemic.
But it could be.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
What else would it be? I'm, I'm, because I'm just following, what would be besides?
I don't know, I just thought public safety event was a.
Fires.
It, it's not very clear to me. Typically, you talk about natural disasters, and it's, you know.
You want us to call it natural disasters.
That's what my brain goes to, but that's why I asked the question, is what, what, were we thinking about more specific things, or was it really broad, or what exactly was that?
Great, thanks.
So looking at the action items here, sustainable budget practices. Well, the Budget Committee actually did a fair amount of work in putting those definitions in place. I don't think the county has necessarily done yet. Part of the direction that's provided the last go-around is to get a better handle on where we are with our facilities, and there is money appropriated in the budget to do that. There's also some money suggested for ARPA funding, hoping in a small amount, to help with some of our mechanical systems. That's probably, that, you know, much of that sustainability work is, is ongoing. Some of it is underway. We expect that the facilities review will be ready by the end of the budget review this next full time. So we're working towards that. Identify funding needs and staffing levels for the future to deliver, for the future to deliver housing purposes. I think right now, the plan is to do that, and jump to a bunch of process next year, because that's when everybody's thinking about those kinds of things, and might as well capture it in the same process. Take that, and it would be a separate discussion, but the data collection would be for the same. Analysis of additional revenue sources. We do have some things on our plate right now. The board is aware of those. One of those is the parking permit program. Hopeful that draft ordinance will be in front of the commission next month. That will be for implementation in 2022. There was a three-pronged effort to try to provide stable funding for the recreational trail program in the forest. That was one of the three elements. The second one was special use permit. We're hopeful that that will be also done this year, but it won't be ready to roll out until, we'll maybe review next year and be ready to roll out after that. So that will take a little bit of time. And then the third piece is sponsorship program, and we anticipate that that will be after the special use program. So those are three things as it relates to recreational trails. The other one, which is potentially much more significant, actually is tied to goal number five. The Chris is really small. Which has to do with acquiring more forest land. The board is aware that we're looking into getting carbon credits for the way that we manage our forests, and have longer rotation in those kind of places, and potentially that is worth money in the carbon market. So Doug will be looking at getting a RFP up, sometimes a smidgen, fall winter, and we'll start the process to start looking into that. And the idea then is to take those funds, which could be very substantial, and put them into a place where they will be used for acquisition of efficient forest. That's the concept. And the funding to the turn-in work will come out of the money that has been used for forest acquisition, so it makes sense that we can do that. The last one I would mention, although it's probably a pretty small case compared to the other one, is one of the things in records and assessment that Brian gave you is looking at, and feed for enterprise own applications. This involves a lot of time that has to be put in, possibly for applications, so we'll get pretty good feedback. Right now, those are the big ones. Obviously, during this planning horizon, the board is well-aware that there'll have to be a discussion about reauthorization of the local options study. So you can throw that in here as well. So that's probably a 2023, 2024 type discussion. You will obviously want to have enough time that you can load it, however many times you may think you need to pass. So let's see. Consolidation of services, I put that off in the future, simply because that's going to take some capacity, so I moved that out. And then, tonight I'm in here about facilities, and I wanted to give an update on that establishment. Well, I'll talk about it now, anyway. One of the things that was requested was we look at facilities, possible consolidation of facilities, and the board is aware that the county's been in discussion with the city of Hood River about the potential of a joint community services center. And where it was last left from the county's perspective, is we had shared courthouse program with the city, and the city had done the program for their needs, and those were going to be put together, and RFP was going to be issued. And when those results came back, then we would have an idea of what it costs we used to do on the process. Well, the city wanted to rethink their program, so this has kind of been a bad burger, so to speak, for a bit. I will say that they have now picked it back up again, and want to have dialogue, instant initial dialogue with the county. And actually, Cheryl and myself will be meeting with Aaron Frye and more of our senior city representatives tomorrow. The concept, as far as I know, and I think this is open for discussion, is that there will be some sort of joint task force that we put together that will be representative of the city and the county, and potentially, that's not a problem, that part is going to show up. But I want to give more of an update on that. And advanced communication, probably the biggest thing I want to mention there is, within our current year budget, there was an expansion of our, well, I'll refer to as a public application contract. One of the issues that we have with board's welfare of this is capacity within the organization. And we do have a great resource, Facebook, they've done a good job for us. And within the proposed budget that has now been adopted, there was an expansion of that work, towards where we could fit the website. But the website's hot and made it on, we don't have content, that's really where we need help. We need to keep our content fresh, and, and that's not, it's just for our website, our social media. And we need to start utilizing the tools that we have in place, including referring constant contact, to get some of our lists in place, so that people can drive up and get motion information up. Anyway, that's a work in progress. We do have funding, and we, Heidi and I are meeting, speaking with Facebook, to get some of that work underway. Housing diversity, I'm going to skip down to that one. The board is aware that the county has been listed as an option for the West Hood River property that it owns in terms of the Van Road project. What, anything comes of that, we need to team. That RFP was issued last week, and so that's out on the streets. Any prospective developers will be meeting with the city, and I'd actually be involved in that as well, off the site. So we'll be doing that, and we'll see what comes back, and whether there's anything that comes back that is of interest to the shareholders. The other thing I would mention is this par bail for incorporated area, there was money approved within the budget, and that is also listed in the ARPA. I mean, request to proceed ahead with the UMC for par bail. While I didn't mention it, I think one of the things I would be fit to do, perhaps just before the start of the next legislative session, is to get a meeting together with our legislators, state legislators, to see if we can get a bill that reduces, changes the rule that is causing the problem, to get that firm on, probably in the area as well. The county has attempted to work with the state, the LCB, to get some momentum there. I don't know if they're too busy, I'm not sure the reason why, but it's still going there. So we will do a process to figure out. So that's, that's, that part of it. And then I think probably in the immediate future, maybe sometime before the end of the year, perhaps it's be after the start of the year, hopefully not too long after that. I think the board needs to have a discussion about what the board is comfortable with in terms of your role in, in the core of housing happening. Forest management, I talked a little bit about that already. I think the one that I would want to mention there is revision of the Forest Management Plan. Forestry has been updating their inventory, I think, three years into it, maybe have another, maybe it's four. They have a little bit more work to do with the inventory, and I'm seeing the inventory is done, and we will start. Talking with Doug, he would indicate that probably those discussions can start next year. We should have some preliminary inventory data. But then there's the policy issues associated with that that need to be discussed. This will likely take some time. And so it's, you know, endings push off quite a bit, but the discussion is, planning starts this year. Let's see, I'm going to go quick through the next couple. I really don't have anything. I really don't have anything on number seven, other than, you know, the style I was going on in CAD about what potentially they could do. But as it relates to number six, the one thing that I would mention there is the one action, number six two, is a part of the Parcale that we've seen, so that's, that will go on. And then review, we didn't pass control ordinance. Cheroots gave an update to the board about some of the issues associated with, we didn't test the force specifically past. The state has stepped in and they're doing that. I guess we will see how that works. And at some point, probably within the next couple, three years, the county may want to decide whether the state's program has worked. And so does the county want to repeal it? So we'll see that. But I think right now, we don't want to do that. We want to see how it works with the state doing that. Anyway, let me go through my other notes here, make sure I got everything that I wanted to say. I think I did it. Any questions about all of that?
Arthur. So on the joint facility discussion, it seems to me that that's largely a political discussion. We know what the facility would look like. It's more a question of is there the will at the county and at the city to go in that direction? So I'm hoping that the discussions are, before we involve a lot of folks, a lot of staff members discussing specifics of it, I'm hoping that the discussion can stay at a political level with elected officials trying to feel each other out to determine if there's a actual will to proceed on that. That's just my observation on that. And then on the IT discussion, you talked about having some outside person look into the IT. Ransomware is an ever-growing threat, especially to counties like ours that are depending more and more on the network systems. And I'm hoping that that's earlier looked at sooner rather than later, because I'm sure that we have significant exposures there. Generally, ransomware is a result of phishing. And that involves more than just someone looking at our network. That means having someone come in and train the staff in how to avoid phishing attacks and then continuously probing and trying to find vulnerabilities and stopping them. So that's, those are my comments.
And I'd just follow up on Arthur's last one that I wrote down. And how are, is our, as a component of that, I guess it's 1.1, I think, maybe where that falls. I'm not sure. But wherever that is, is an evaluation of our insurance with respect to our exposure to ransomware also a part of that? What we're looking at?
Actually, we've already started looking into that. That doesn't necessarily have to involve IT. That's more has to do with our insurance. Yes, we've already talked about that, whatever levels of coverage.
Okay.
And that's pricing.
Okay, so we're moving forward.
To just be clear, we're not covered currently, but you're looking at getting extended coverage? Or we have limited coverage now?
I would want to say we have limited coverage. The idea is that we have broader coverage. Yes, you at this moment, I'm not sure I can absolutely answer the question. And we don't want to get further information. I just don't want to talk about it.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
We just let Arthur go first every time. It's not a less than, yeah.
Yeah. Next up, ARPA funding discussion. Jeff.
We'll talk about it now. So the next item was, has been discussed at the last meeting with commissioners. It has to do with ARPA funding. This was staff's attempt to start to generate a list. Literally half an hour before this meeting started, I got, as you probably all did, an email from NICO. And they shared their testimonies to the treasury about how they would like to interim rules changed. And I will just say, I didn't have a lot of time to review it. But if the treasury changes, goes rules based on the testimonies submitted by NICO, this list will change. And probably the most significant one is that the way loss revenue works right now, in terms of the treasury's definition, the county would not qualify. If it's changed to reflect what NICO submitted, we would. And so that is worth a fair amount. I don't want to say millions, but it's worth some pretty significant money in terms of loss revenue. The issue for the county is that when this went into place, year over year, we had a local option levy. So when you look at our overall revenue, it went up and that's passed from treasury. We had individual sources that found, can capture those, and they changed the rules. So I, it's not a great way to start this, but that's what I started it. The other thing that I would mention, and I did put this in the material, is we've got the 150-plus page document that has the interim rules in it. And one of the things that has been a question is what constitutes an obligation for the last two years? The dollars have to be sent to their program. And interim rules do have an expedition. And I can read it, but it really does answer my question in my level of satisfaction of whether if you hire people, we can continue to use these funds to pay them in those last two years. So that's something I think that we have to continue to monitor.
The way that I read that was that if you have a contract, that you can obligate funds by saying, we're going to build this building, and we've hired a contractor to build this building, but that you cannot use it for labor, that labor has to be by end of 25.
Well, to me, that's an open question. And the reason why is because it's a point of contract. So I don't know where they draw a line. I would like some proof of verification on that myself. But the way the sheet was done is we assumed that the cutoff in terms of paying for staff that is hired is December 31st, 2022. Because I can't suggest otherwise based on what I have right now. And so when you see the question marks on the sheet, that's why. Let me go through the, to sort of the sheet here a little bit. I'm not going to go through each of these. I have a brief summary about those. What I am going to talk about is stuff where there are no numbers. That wasn't sure what was within there and whether or not that was a priority for the board. And that has to do with portable housing, other grant programs for other local governments, nonprofits, and small businesses. I just talked about potential revenue loss, which, you know, that may or may not happen between the two times. And childcare, which came up in a conversation, and then funding for all rest companies. Those things I don't have numbers for. I think the way I look at this, I'm not sure how the commissioners look at this, is as it stands right now, in all likelihood, the county could probably spend all of its money itself. But I'm not sure that that is the best interest of people of the rest of the county. And so I think the board has complete discretion to determine how you use this money. So we've attempted up to this point in time to put a list together. And I'm sure this list could either contract or expand based on what we learn as we move through time about ARPA. But at the end of the day, the board feels that there are certain areas that need to be addressed and need to be addressed sooner than rather than later, that I would hope you would all feel comfortable taking some of this money to help. This gives you a rough idea of what might be available and what was being said behind this. But it's pretty clear to me at this point that there's a lot of things that we don't necessarily know just yet. The other thing I would say, and this is actually good news, is I would expect we will get our first half of our funding this week.
Here's one of the things that jumped out at me as I went through this is that recovery coordinator position. As we look at the needs in the community and the funding that's available, not through ARPA, just ARPA, but other, also infrastructure funds become available, you know, other pieces. Really nice to have a person who's sitting, actually understanding all those pieces and helping us because, you know, some of the special districts, you know, it's less than far from. Some of the folks who are looking for help, there may be funding available from other streams that would, you know, be appropriate to use in that area, but they may just need help accessing. So it seems like that would be a great place to start in terms of getting kind of our heads wrapped around where we need to go.
We touched on this, I think, last time we talked about this, but there are two philosophies to how we could approach some of this. One is we could look to sweep up as much money as we can into a generalized grant program. Ultimately, we could look at the big ticket items that benefit everyone in the community, such as housing and childcare. I think those are the two that we highlighted. And we could instead look at doing things that benefit everybody through attacking those problems as opposed to saving money for the grant, for specific grant programs.
No, I wasn't even thinking about saving money for specific grant programs. I was thinking more of being aggressive and going after all the funding that's available, not just the ARPA funding.
Oh, I wasn't answering, I wasn't, oh, this is a separate item I was following on. I wasn't commenting on you.
There's a lot of opportunity, I mean.
In terms of, you know, what was the basis for these numbers within the interim rules? They specifically allow 10% as a sort of the default standard. And if there's more than that, you can do it, but then you have to log justification. So the way I set up the numbers, basically, if you use the community recovery coordinator and grant manager, and then you fold in the technology assessment and resilience assessment, that's roughly, all those things added together is roughly 10%, 10%. You don't have to do it that way, but I was trying to maximize the potential amount of money available for outside, outsides.
So I guess I'm not confused about this, because I thought the community recovery coordinator, I didn't view that as an overhead position. I thought the 10% was an overhead number that we could charge for administering this. But this is more of a person?
I consider it overhead.
You do, okay.
Yeah, and that's the way I treated it. And because basically, this person would be helping do it in a certain sense. They'll do other things as well, but they'll be helping do it in a certain sense. And coordinating with outside groups or whatever, basically. Once we have a better idea of how this might be used, then it's probably going to be more clear. The other issue that we have is simply dealing with the county end of this. And keeping track of all of the contracts, the dollars going in and out. So you'll know that if it's part-time positions, you know, it could be any combination of things. I'm not assuming anything. But it could be that we have a financial type person who's dealing with a funny piece of this. And if you have literally millions and millions of dollars, and you're leveraging other money, this money, and bringing in more millions of dollars, then somebody needs to keep track of all that. So, you know, that's the part why it's.
Especially after reading the departmental reports and looking at staffing in our finance department and other departments. I mean, we've been short. Now we're going to be really short, so.
So I, you know, I think for us to take good use of this money and to make sure that there's no problems from the county down the road, if in the event there's a audit, you want to make sure you're spending what you need to spend now to make sure everything's in place, you know, I have any problems now. So this is all part and parcel of that. You know, it's, I wouldn't say it's super well-defined, but I think you get some of the process.
So I have a question regarding what you brought up about this position. Isn't that something that we kind of intended that Erin would be, have some responsibility? That we're kind of, obviously, as soon as we started vaccinating, I was hoping all the time got eaten out. But I'm wondering, you know, if she does have any time to.
It's possible. I mean, we haven't, we have not discussed that. Right now, as it relates to the work going on in the environmental health area, that work is not gotten done. And so the work that was being done in environmental health in support of pandemic response is now being touched by Erin so that they can actually do the rest of the work they're supposed to be doing. So she's picked up that slack. We just don't have the people to do the work. And so it's been a challenge.
I would hope, yeah, I mean, I would hope that as pandemic response declines, hopefully, yeah, maybe she can start. If we did have another person, you know, she can come in and assist in that arena.
I think what this tells us, you know, we saw how incredibly effective it was to have a dedicated person focused on a problem. Because staff is just pulled in so many different directions. And so we know that this model works. So I'm glad to see that we're looking to employ it more broadly. Okay.
Any, any further questions?
I guess I just have an overall comment. I think it's great work, and clearly, the question marks are bigger than the numbers that we know. But, you know, there are good reasons for that, because everyone thinks about this. So just recognize that, you know, we know maybe 25%, but we don't know 75%. But I think it really, it really poses the policy questions really well, so we have something to chew on.
The staff reports, in conjunction with this document, they, you could see the need. The numbers are really helpful in seeing, are over year. I thought the district attorney's report was actually with the Wausau County numbers. It's really helpful to have that comparison to understand what a county with somewhat similar caseloads is facing and what their staffing is. So it's just, it's always good to have that.
And I guess I'll just say this annoying last, I've been making sure that once a week I go and pedal around in the forest. And I'm just astonished at how many people are there compared to, you know, two years ago. It's just amazing how much more use there is. Everyone is well behaved, you know, at least when I'm there. I'm sure you guys get to see other times. But what I see is everyone's really well behaved, tons of kids, but just people everywhere. The roads are being hammered, the facilities are being hammered. It's just amazing.
This may scare you, but I'm still driving around the woods, so.
It's just, I'm on a bike, so please watch out.
The only question I have is, I didn't see the number in here for the unfunded amount from the first grant program we did. I thought, so the next time we have an update on this, can we get that number from the CAD?
Yes. You know, we actually got that, I guess, didn't think it into the RFP.
I may have.
We did get those, those numbers. I'm not going to do it off the top of my head.
It's okay, just next time, we, this will obviously be back around.
Yeah, we did find the numbers, and then the report out from CAD.
You even highlighted in yellow in the minutes so that we could see that it was outstanding.
Oh, was it?
Well, it was highlighted that the question was asked, that there was an answer attached to it. So I said, oh, wait, where's the answer? And it was there.
Yeah, Heidi's, Heidi's got the email on the connection if you want to give the answer. There were 256 completed applications, 246 were eligible for a total of $1,735,000 in potential awards. And I believe there were 107 awards totaling $845,000.
So it's about 850, 900,000 that wasn't funded?
Yeah, correct.
That was eligible but not funded.
Yeah, it was 1.7 million less than 800,000.
Thank you.
My only question that I have is around the timing and the decision-making process for our 21, 22 category here that we have. So we're kind of talking around, like, what is our timeframe do you see for us making these final decisions? And I think you said in an email recently in an update that you're receiving some of the funds?
Yeah, yeah, I would expect that we'll receive the first half of the funds. Yeah, yeah, I would expect that we'll receive the first half of the funds, I believe, this week. And so, this is actually, something nice about this money is, we should invest it, and we get to keep the invested earnings, and it'll have to use those for care, or for meet the requirements of federal government, that's county's money. I just wish investment creates.
You get 0.01% interest.
Give it a little time, it might be.
It's 0.6, I think.
Yeah, 0.6, yeah.
So as far as the timeframe of the decision-making piece, as I have constituents ask, and other colleagues, county commissioner colleagues asking what we're doing, what do we perceive as our decision-making timeframe for at least the 21, 22 items, I don't know, in the year, we're saying in the third quarter?
Well, I was, um, thinking that we have work for money, we see the debt with, I was waiting to have some board during the regular meeting to allow us to access these funds for certain things that are on the list tonight.
Okay.
I mean, it's nowhere near how much money we're going to get, but we want to get going in some of this work.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was thinking.
Anything else on ARPA discussion? Is it? No more questions? We will have time in the regular session. Okay, next up on our work session agenda is Certificate Pay, Non-Union Law Enforcement, County Administrator, Human Resources. Cheryl, you're going to start? Okay.
Cheryl, if I may, again, the last discussion, that one we have that fairly close to you, and you need to speak directly into my voice if you actually think so.
Okay, so, um, part of what came out of last four meetings, you were all looking for some superior information in the month, because Jeff had asked me to pull everything together, and put together a memo, and try to give you some consolidated updates for what we've given you. We have been giving you pieces of this for quite some time, and so this is an effort for us to present to you this, as one consolidated piece of information. And so what you had in your packet was a memo, and you also had some supportive data that how we look something like this. Okay, so I'll go through the memo, and just sort of highlight what we're trying to put in front of you tonight for a decision process during the general meeting. So first of all, what I kind of want to start with is that the direction for this process was based on some challenges that came out in the previous session, identifying improvements in the coaching sessions that were being faced by the county. So what we will do as a part of this is, and Jeff had mentioned that earlier, compare to the classification compensation that's come out, so we have the RPL for that, and so hopefully we'll start to get some information from companies that need to invest into that program. In addition, staff has been collecting and comparing data in response to concerns that were voiced by the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Office was concerned about compression, because it came out of the ERV or Employee Relations Board order increase that impacted the sheriff's deputy, and the salary increases in the certification case for the law enforcement members. But what that did was created some concern of the compression issues with the leadership team that's in the Sheriff's Office, which is the price of the sheriff, sergeant, the head sheriff, within those roles, and then you have probation as well, as well, 911, supervisors to commanders, as part of all of that information that we have collected. Number three for what's going on at the same time is that currently we are in negotiations with four contracts. So we have the Aspen Contract, which are 1082, which is the General Employee Union, 2503, which do partially work for street, and then the District Attorney's Office employees, and then we have FOHL, which is the predominant number of our staff. And so all of those are coming into play, and then as well, the Board of Commissioners, who's who all approved a couple of living adjustments to the budgeting process for the general employees who are non-union, to be 2% first of January, 2% for July. Okay, so that's kind of all of the information that has been going on and has represented the periodic office's recognition of these sites. And so the issues that were faced with in this, the Sheriff's Department, they have some concerns, as I had indicated, with regards to compression between the leadership roles and the subordinate roles, which are the deputies versus the budgets primarily. There was ERV ordered a three-year salary increase of 18%, plus a new certification recognition rate at 4.8% regarding intermediate and advanced jurisdictions. Based on past practices, the sheriff's leadership indicated that they believe that the non-represented individuals, sergeants, would be receiving the same certification rate as the contract award, which is based on past practice. We don't have anything in writing that has that noted anywhere, and so we were looking for something to that effect, but that's not else. So we're faced with that. What was awarded in the past negotiation, of course, was not approved by the Board of Commissioners, but was rather afforded to the employee relations board, and so with that information, the Board of Commissioners have approved a 3% and 5% certification rate, 10% for intermediate, 5% for advanced, versus what you were, by the Board of Commissioners Board, plus the board had approved a 2% salary increase across the board versus the 18, well, actually, six, 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 15, we would have done 23. And so, um, on top of that, of course, as I had indicated, we have the contracts that are changing stuff. So the sheriff's leadership was concerned about compression. When I work with the union negotiations, what they're more looking at is salaries. They're just, they're just in their own individual group, and with the salaries that they're paid for, what individuals begin to be in particular roles specific to those groups. And so then what, of course, we're trying to do for the organization is a total comprehensive look at salaries compensation across the board, to look at similar roles, or similar duties, similar skills, abilities across all groups of employees, not just within the sub-subordinate group. So what we're expected to see out of that is that there certainly are going to be some shortages. We have identified some through some past senior work, we know that they will vary, they can be small amount percentage shortages, or they can be quite substantial percentage shortages. I think that what we're trying to do with that, and where this all sort of boils down, is that what we're worried about is giving money out, because we know that these are all going to be different amounts. We're worried about giving too much over here and minimizing the ability for us to respond to the compensation analysis. And so, kind of what's in front of you then is sort of to make a decision about where you want to go, based on the data that considers you in the packet, with regard to the certification pay for the leadership team within the Sheriff's Office, based on all of the other competing challenges that we have out there. That's, that's where you're at. So hopefully that sort of sums up what we've been giving you, and what you have in front of you right now, and if you have any other questions.
Would you like us to move to the sheets, or comfortable with the sheets?
I would like.
I think it'd be, I think that'd be a good idea. I've kind of got heads up, because I got to go through it with Jeff last week, so, and I know it's important, it's not that easy to completely understand, so, yeah, go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay, so the sheets that we're referring to are the ones with the multiple powers on them, and I'm going to start, just for me in the order that I began with, the first thing I started with was the control charge, is that, yes?
So each sheet represents a decision, so that's probably the first page. Each page is a job, so.
So there are five of them.
And our back at the under sheriff is first.
Oh, I can start there. So that's just my, my own path.
I mean, it's such an effort to scroll.
Okay, I'm here to make your job, you see. Let's start with the under sheriff. And so what you can see in the, at the top of the sheet, I color-coded, ink was what was proposed by the sheriff or the Sheriff's Department, blue was what was proposed by administration, and the kind of green color or the tan was what it's using in comparison of what you had approved, which was the 3%, well, theoretically, the two of the two which were approved, and then the certification rate at 3 and 5, which is what we had originally asked for when we were through the law enforcement committee discussion. And so with regard to the under sheriff, what you can see in the green box is data that gives you, on the top, we're looking strictly at compression, let me get a little clearer. The bottom part is looking at salaries comparisons, so this is a little bit different angle. So on the top, what was proposed by the sheriff, the subordinate role of the sergeant, and then I was looking at what administration was proposing compared to the sergeant, and then what the board approved, and this was where the under sheriff role compares, and again, back to the sergeant role. And I'm looking specifically at compression. When you drop down to the second graph below that, I'm looking now at salary results. So we looked at comparative data between Baker, Platte, Crook, Curry, Jefferson, Malier, Morrell, Sola, Wausau. So I gathered the data from that, and to be quite honest with you, the data is provided by the Sheriff's Department. They have it, and they, so I use that data. And so what I'm looking at in the green box is exactly that, the average minimum salary of all of those other counties, not to include River County, the average maximum salary. And then below each of those is the percentage, and as you can see at the very beginning, comparison salary results compared to River County, so River County is lower by that percentage, so with regard to the under sheriff, average minimum salary, we are lower than the average minimum salary by 14%. If you look at the maximum, we are lower than the average maximum by 11%. And then within the third column, I went back to each of the counties, and I asked them how they managed their certification pay, and it can be anywhere from a straight monthly amount to a percentage per month salary. So what I did was I calculated on the maximum salary, each individual county, what the maximum salary would be, plus the certification accordingly with how they paid it. And then I took an average of that maximum salary plus certification across all counties, not to include the River County, because I'm looking at the other counties. And so that's what you're looking at with the under index group. That is, that's the average maximum salary with certification added in. So then you go down low to the administrative proposal, and trust the same colors, the administration proposed 2% and 2% July and January, and if you look at that, the minimum salary was at 10% lower than the comparators, 6.85% lower than the comparators, and with the certification proposed by administration, administrative, which is up here in the blue, becomes 2.59% compared to the parent account. And then we leave the process again, when we look at what the board had approved, which was the 3 and the 5%, plus the 2 and the 2%, and then we look at the very bottom, which is what was proposed by the Sheriff's Office, and when you see a negative, what that means is more than what the third county has.
It helps, I understand, I understand the percentages.
I do have a question. The comparisons that we're looking at, what is the timeframe for those comparisons? Are they before colos are applied?
Yes, so they were all effective last, across the last fiscal year, so it would have been 21 fiscal year for those counties, because of course, most of them are in the same process that we are right now, and have not all decided what they're doing for the state. And I did not go back to collect all the data for 21, 22.
Sure, no, I appreciate that, but doesn't that mean then that when you're looking at the comparisons, if, for example, the board approved comparison, that's, that's our next year's salary compared to their last year's salary?
That would be, okay.
A question, Cheryl.
Yes.
On, on the administrative proposal, where it says we're still with this proposal, we'd be 2.59% below the average. What, what are we currently at, below the average? Do we know that?
Um.
I want to, I want to see if we're heading in the right direction of it.
So I believe that, um, I may not have run that number, or at least I may not have that off the pressure that I'm looking at.
So are you asking, are you putting the 2 and 2% or?
Prior to.
Prior to, and that would be at the top, where it says current, and then.
Percent increase.
And then you, if you look at the percentages, I believe it's at the top, am I right, Cheryl?
Are you, are you up to the very top?
Does it be arresting, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to know what it is now, and where we're going with this.
Prior to, because now we've already, correct, we've definitely made it.
Right now, we would be around 10%, or it will be 15% lower than the top, in advance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so next under the list, the full charges.
Sorry, just, let me ask one more question, just to make sure that I'm reading this the right way. What conclusions do you draw on compression and on salary comparison from this particular page, from the deputy sheriff's position, under sheriff's position, I'm sorry?
So when you're asking, so what the conclusion that I draw is, what are you specifically asking, are you asking, do I think we are low?
Does this show compression, and does it show we are low?
There is compression if we don't, if we don't make some sort of decision, yeah.
Okay, so I'm not seeing that here, so talk me through where you see that.
So if you, if you go back up to the top, and you look at the subordinate role of sergeant, and you look at.
Right.
The difference, there is definitely going to be, if you look at 125 dollars a month, 200 dollars a month, and the top pay would be with the certification, what you're, what you're looking at is that 63%, what that tells me is that there are compression issues, and so we're not, we're, we're going to have some issues between the sheriff's deputy pay and then the subordinate sergeant.
Maybe I've read this backwards, because I'm seeing you got.
Are you on the sergeant stage?
No, I'm on the under sheriff's position.
She was talking about the sergeant.
Ah, okay, sorry. So numbers, but just to, so I understand the numbers, a big number for the percent difference to a subordinate means that you're less risk of compression?
No more.
Okay, now I'm definitely reading this wrong.
Am I, am I backwards? Okay, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So, okay, so in this particular page, I mean, I know in several of the other pages, it's really clear to me that there, the numbers are. the numbers are tiny and that's vertical to compression. But this particular position isn't showing a compression, but it is showing a, uh, compared to the, it, it's showing a non-competitive salary, but it's not compression risk.
If you look at these sheets, and you look at the compression analysis for each of the positions, position, uh, that really is pretty clear, um, is gonna need to be considered further is sergeant.
Right, right, that, that's what I saw.
There's not, well, there's some separation, um, it's, it's not probably what it needs to be. Even with, um, even with the, the recommended proposal, so, you know, when we do the additional work, this is, I can guarantee this is.
So, so your proposal, the blue proposal on that position, for example, is that this is an interim position, and then we do the, the, the comp study, and we'll be revisiting that quite quickly.
Yeah. You know, when you look at, you look at all of these, um, unfortunately, it's just, when you're trying to use the same set of numbers applied to all positions, so that in terms of what's received is equitable, but doesn't necessarily end up, the impact is, is equitable. So you have two positions where clearly, uh, there's no compression, and they're actually well above market. Uh, you have one position where there's no compression, and it's spot on. Um, and then you have two where, um, where they're low in terms of comparability, and one of them is, there's, it's not, it's, in terms of compression, it's not exactly probably the best situation. And that's the patrol sergeant, it's clearly, if you look at these numbers, it tells you you're not best matched.
And what's the timing, could you remind me of what the timing is for, you just said you just put out a, an RFP?
And so they have their details, they'll have to be in the office to respond. Uh, we'll come back and send you guys, um, who, if you make decisions about who we select to accomplish these projects. I'm hoping, um, just based on the previous data collected, that we will see some results from this and have something in the future, um, probably by the end of this year, um, so that we can plan until the next year.
This would come up.
So it becomes, so we'll have data of this.
Well, actually, come to the board's wealth before then, which way you can. Having done these in other places, um, just know that you're in for sticker shock.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, you just have to look at it and go, okay, well, we know what it is, how, how are we gonna deal with this over, over time, or where its money's gonna come from, or whatever. Those conversations are gonna have to occur. I've, I've never done one of these studies where that could happen. So you just have to come up with strategies to deal with it. And, you know, the, the sergeant issue is pretty clear here, and the undersheriff, clearly, is there market issues there as well.
So, in terms of just the overall timing, just so that we all understand what's going on, by the end of this calendar year, we will have a better picture across the entire county of where we are for each position, salary by salary. Uh, but corrections beyond what's in this, what, beyond what we're talking about today, uh, that's in next budget cycle.
Yes, I mean, all of these positions will be looked at again. I mean, that's a part of, of the understanding that you have when you enter this decision-making process, that wherever we are at the end of this, these positions will all be looked at again. It's all be a part of this complex, so the whole goal is that we go, put two, actually, one place, and then we're not sure what we can.
You know, and I would say that in terms of, there are options that are listed on these sheets, and officials can choose whichever option they want to. You don't have to go with the administrative recommendation. The intent with the administrative recommendation was to come up with something between the two. Having looked at these numbers, you know, we didn't feel that doing nothing was an option. Given that some of the issues associated with these positions. So that's why, you know, in terms of the memo, doing nothing was a risk. So it seems reasonable that something be done, you know, that's how it was presented. I would also say that the board didn't approve the two and the two, which you've already not done. So, yeah, I think everybody appreciates that.
Okay.
But you wanna go through the rest of these, or does that all speak to what?
Well, I, I have a question about the compression, just quick.
Okay.
Um, so a low number is high compression on the percentages, and a high number is, is low. How, I guess I just don't know how you would use that information to make a determination of where exactly that should be. Are there, um, best practices that are used to determine what that's supposed to be in different industries?
It, it, yeah, I mean, usually you, you, you would see enough of an increase between roles, I guess if you will, to summarize it, that you would see enough of an increase between this role and this role to make it advantageous to be, to make this choice, right, and move to that role. Uh, and that's sort of the goal, and part of the prescribed numbers. It, it can vary, it depends on your role, it depends on the type of work, depending on any, it, it, yeah.
That's, that's a part why it's good to have, you know, outside eyes on this. We gotta say, kind of work, because they're gonna know what they see in other places.
But you are saying that, uh, in each of these cases, we would, that best practices would be not to have compression?
Yes.
Yeah, I, there, there are many cases, I would say, I, I can think of, you know, several cases, three to six cases, where I have hired people who I paid significantly more than me.
Oh, I, I.
As, as specialists, right?
Absolutely, no, considering my, for, the previous, for, that I had, we had many managers who not even told you what their, their, who we employees who was paid, but that, that, that's, that game, not that role, right? I mean, and, and there's a difference in, in what's required to do, the role of the subordinate, if you will, I mean that word, right? There's a, there's skills that are required for that. Managing doesn't always require you to have the things that are skilled, right?
Right.
You're managing the work and the work flow. And so in some cases, yes, who may have a manager who's basically less than their team's working is, however. I would say so.
These are not those, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, thank you. Okay. Mark, go.
I can, unless you, unless it would be repetitive, um, to you, if, if the explanation put up in your shareup was, was adequate, and you can flow through the rest of them, I would have to stop.
What, what do you think, commissioners? Like I said, I've already gone through this, so I'm, I had, so, where you, uh, do you continue to flip the rest?
Now that I understand the percentages.
Yeah, that's.
I, I was a little lost, yeah.
We used to look at this, now that I've really understood it.
Yeah.
So you, you want to try to look at?
I, I don't know if I need to talk, but.
It's obvious for, for compression, the one that's, that's close, was these patrol sergeants versus the deputies. And we expected that was the case, that's what happened. But, uh, it would, it would still be above, no matter which one we do. They would, they, we wouldn't hit the compression by this point, if, if we approved any one of these.
Um, if you, you, if you went with, um, what was proposed by the sergeant, you, if you looked at the very, uh, yeah, I think that you would, actually. Uh, you, you would.
No, you're, you're.
Am I?
Yeah, you're not, you didn't understand this question.
Are you just talking compression to me?
Yeah, we, we would never hit, we're not gonna hit zero on this compression. In other words, the deputies aren't gonna get up to it, the sergeant's starting to do one of these proposals. And that was our concern, right? But this is the one that's closed.
Yeah, that's the one that's closed.
Okay.
The analysis would show, uh, that there's separation, but it's not perhaps the number that it should be, but, if you're looking for absolute compression.
Well, it could actually be absolute compression compared to another jurisdiction, though, so, for example, compared to Wasco County, we could have a situation where our sergeants are paid less than the, uh, patrol deputies in Wasco County. Yeah, I'm just making up numbers there, but, you know, I think I would be consistent with this data, right?
Okay, so why would you be doing that with compression, removing compression? I don't think it's important.
It, it is, but it's also important to understand what jurisdictions that are close to you.
Yeah.
If, if, if a sergeant could go be a patrol deputy in another jurisdiction close by and get paid more, I mean, that's, that's relative.
That's, that should be a function, uh, of comparability, though. If Wasco County is in a business, they're laying the comps, then you are comparing by position, that's the way, your structure would be, or what the comps are. Does it always work out that way? I don't know, but I think for the most part, it's like that.
So I guess the, the question for us is, is what are we attempting to accomplish with the short-term changes versus the long-term changes? And I think Seth laid it out pretty clearly, that their, their thinking was that we, that we, what we wanted to do was to maintain as much flexibility as we could going into the full, uh, comp study in the next budget cycle, uh, but to immediately address the, the crises created by the, the compressions. And so I think we have to decide if that's what we want, if, if we agree with Seth's interpretation of that. If we do, I think the answer is up to the audience, but if we don't, then we do something different.
Give, give the boss.
I'm, I'm actually, it's really looking forward to having that comprehensive look, because we've never had that. Entire time I've been on this board, it's always siloed, and we're looking at one little piece at a time. And it's like whack-a-mole, where you're trying to address issues, but you're not looking at the whole thing, so.
It, uh, you know, in, in this work, uh, doesn't actually look at this. You know, when you do these studies, you look at comparability in terms of, you know, externally, you look at, you look at equity, internally as well. Well, this is looking at equity in terms of compression, but there's another kind of equity that you have to look at. Um, and I, I, I can't do it, I'm not supposed to do that kind of work. Um, but you basically, everybody has to do a job survey, and they're looking for KSA's, knowledge, skills, abilities, and you start measuring those things in terms of work. Put them on a performance factor system, and then get scores, and you start to group positions in ranges for similar levels of responsibilities. And I, I don't know that, I don't know if that's, but, but that's an important part of equity, because you're compensating people, at least to some degree, for the work they're doing equal to somewhat in some other department or somewhere else.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a budget push-pull with us, we have X amount of dollars.
Yeah, it, it, you know, it's, it's not, I wish I could say it's the exact time, it's more than our form. And I'm not very good at artis, which is why it's pretty much a whole, it's worth. Uh, because you, you know, it's, everything isn't always aligned, so your market comparability may suggest that those are different, and your internal equity may suggest that you should be more similar. So the art is, and where do we do that?
Well, I think at the strategic planning, we, it seemed like we were unanimous that our goal was to be competitive. Uh, it, it's not acceptable to us to be asking people to do a job for less than a competitive salary. Uh, and that that would determine what salaries were, and then from there, we would determine what we could afford to do. Uh, and that might result that, even if it resulted in us being unable to perform certain tasks, that we were going to pay people a competitive salary, and that was our, I, I felt like we made that commitment during the discussion of strategic planning. I think it's important that we reiterate that, if we, if we all do believe that, that we reiterate that, so that people understand we're going into this, uh, this comp study, that that is our goal. Find out, find out what the numbers are, the numbers are what they are, sticker shock or not, they are what they are, and that's what we have to be paying people.
Which also falls into that of pieces of our, as we're looking at what we're gonna do and how we're gonna function as an organization. It's, how are we gonna be more effective and?
Right.
With the dollars that we have?
I think these reports will show us where we're at for now. And, uh, very, very important for us to be looking at this, and knowing where we need to make some changes. And we need to be working towards that.
Well, are we?
Did you want to go through any of the rest of these, or?
No, I, I'm comfortable with rationality.
Okay.
I'm comfortable to make a decision, are we doing a decision consensus phase? For what section are we gonna have an actual vote on a decision? We're gonna talk about this in a, in a, but I'm, I'm comfortable at this point.
I have a, a couple more questions.
Sure.
Um, just for understanding how the information was placed to the table. On the administrative proposal, in part of it, because I don't really fully understand the incentive certificate pay and how it affects all, um, all staff, like, um, are certain staff limited in the number of certificates they can obtain, and that caps them at that, in those categories? Or is there a plethora of certificates that staff can obtain, create, and receive, and advance?
In particular roles, especially companies, um, they have just as immediate, in the specification that we are. We have other roles that may have other certifications, uh, that agents can, are certified by.
Okay, and this methodology, this model of a percentage or, uh, an actual amount, this, there's this bouncing back and forth going on, and I don't, I'm confused as to why there's two models at play, why is there not a percentage? So I'm not, is one more advantageous than the other? I don't understand.
Well, uh, and so in, can you, yes, um, if you have a certain, uh, percentage on top of the salary, so if you receive a, uh, class.
So if our salary is more.
You get two percent more on that, and you're gonna get eight, or four, or three, or five, or whatever the percentage is on top of that monthly rate. So if, yeah.
So if you're further along in the make, the step matrix, and you're at a higher step level, then your percentage is based on what your step level is and how many certificates are.
Yes, true.
And instead of, everybody gets the same, the one twenty five. And so then my question, the follow-up of that, is on the administrative proposal. Is that a cost management attempt by going in with the flat amount rather than going with the percentage, the four and the eight? Because not knowing where the staff fall on the matrix, because we have many staff at the higher end, or many, I'm assuming they're just all over the place, probably. Um, and how that calculates out, is it truly a cost-saving, do you have more of a flat rate like that? Or is it? Was that calculated out, and is that why the two hundred fifty and the four hundred is placed in the administrative proposal? Because of the cost, a little bit of a cost-saving measure?
It, it, you know, it wasn't put in there as, as a cost-saving measure for the year in which it occurs. What it's an attempt to do is to be able to allow the county to better manage its costs over time. You can always increase it, but the percentage could always be a bonus.
And, okay, one more, sorry, I'm hung, I'm hung up on this incentive piece. Is the whole purpose of this, in this department, to incentivize staff to obtain further training and further certification? I'm assuming right now, is that?
Yeah, if, um, as the commissioner, I mean, I've got a lot of background, like, this, I think this really can be important to understand. But when you're ready, that's the answer.
That would be, I'm just trying to understand this piece of it, because two different models, and the numbers are a little bit all over the place. I'm trying to really understand the intent of include, the inclusiveness of this piece, as far as even union contract goes, and how the non-residents, and how they obtain certificates, and, and why, and, and that. My last question, it'll always come out, is, um, is this incentive-type programming that's put into salary schedules, is it, um, particular to the sheriff's department, or are there other departments that may have the same kind of incentive certification, kind of like bonus pay?
This certification rate comes into place in, in the rules, uh, as opposed to the staff and leadership, uh, comes into place. Comes into place in ninety-one-one, both staff and leadership. I believe the other sheriff as well.
But none of the other departments county-wide?
Not this type of.
Okay.
But you use the term bonus pay, I think, isn't it more, it's, it's to pay for a different qualification, qualification, right?
Okay, sorry, that might have been a wrong word. Okay, that is helpful, thank you.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to give, uh, Sheriff Engle a chance to come up and talk about this. Good. Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Thank you for explaining that. I spent a lot of time staring at it, uh, trying to figure out what the percentage.
The first I thought, nice, pretty colors and I kept staring, staring until it started to make a little bit of sense, so I think I got it.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Uh, I'll, uh, I'm, I'll be pretty free, but I just wanted to make sure the commission kind of has some background. And I know there's a lot of question about what our certification pay is and what that means. Um, and I haven't seen the administrative proposal that's being discussed, so I'm not sure. Uh, it doesn't sound like they have it, it sounds like there are numbers. The, oh, in fact, yeah, I have, yeah, I was talking about. Um, so, uh, just kind of more information on all of these positions that we looked at. There haven't been salary surveys done on these positions for five to seven years. Um, over, uh, since I became sheriff, we definitely had to make some adjustments in the under sheriff. Uh, and then some permanent staff. And then in two thousand and fourteen, um, we negotiated with the sergeant to get them out of the bargaining unit and they became non-represented in two thousand and fourteen. And as a result of that, um, they, uh, then were on a new, um, non-represented pay scale and made sure that there wasn't compression with deputies at that time. But that hasn't been looked at, I don't think, since two thousand and fourteen. It has gone up, uh, the pay scale's gone up when the county has done positive pay over the last seven years. But other than that, we're coming down in survey on the sergeants. Um, so right now, we're in a position where, uh, the sergeants, some of these sergeants are making less than the support that they provide, um, as of today. Uh, and talking with the supervisor, she was unaware of that on, on, anywhere else in the county at this point. Uh, with the non-represented group, so when, um, when I took office in two thousand and thirteen, uh, the prior administration, uh, HR director, uh, explained to me that, um, the, that their practice was that all non-represented sheriff's officers, certified, um, people, so from the sheriff on down, um, to now the sergeants, receive certification pay, um, at the contract rate. And, uh, we're able to track that back to two thousand and one, so twenty years ago, that's when that started. Um, and we kind of looked at, we've got a supervisor that has been a non-represented supervisor since, uh, about two thousand or two thousand and one and can see that, um, when she moved out, that that rate stays the same as whatever the contracted rate was. And there's been a couple of changes in the last twenty years in the contracted rate and so it matched that. Um, and I'm not aware of any agreement, but that was the practice for the last twenty years to match that, uh, contracted rate. So the certifications, um, so most of our supervisory management and executive level positions, uh, we require that, um, the applicant, uh, obtain an intermediate at a minimum. Um, so you get a basic if you're in a certified position, you have to have the basic and that's all you have to have. You have to have that basic. And so, uh, intermediate and advanced, and then there are, um, there are additional certifications over, we're not even looking at those. Uh, but, uh, with those intermediate and advanced, in order to obtain those, it's a combination of post-secondary education, um, and, uh, training and then you've got to have years of experience, et cetera. So, um, it's fairly comprehensive, the state has made this more difficult to obtain. Um, you have to maintain those, requires those of our supervisory staff for many of most of the positions.
At the intermediate level?
Yeah, that's, that's the minimum. Um, and I believe like the under sheriff, I think that job description says advanced, but I, I have to back the book. But, which is different than deputies and our dispatchers and probation, uh, deputies where they have the option of obtaining those certificates, but, uh, it's not required. Uh, and so it is more of an incentive, of course, it, uh, benefits us as agencies because we have better trained, uh, better educated, uh, team members. So that's, that's kind of the, some of the history behind that. One other thing that I wanted to just point out to the commission and I'm hoping perhaps you can take some action on it. Uh, so in the contract, there is stipulation for, uh, Spanish language pay. And, uh, right now, I have a disparity going on in our office where I have one non-represented team member that gets that Spanish language pay and I just recently advertised for a fileable for first position and got a bi-sociable cultural, um, team member out of that, but I'm told that she has not got the support, um, for that Spanish language pay. So it's not much money, but, um, there is a disparity that I'm hoping can be addressed. And it's just with one person.
Why, why is that? Why, why would they like it?
Well, uh, I think one, so one of the people that gets it is a sergeant, which is non-represented, non-union position. Um, and, uh, that, that was the agreement since two thousand and fourteen. And then my understanding is that there's nothing in the personnel code that, um, the county can fall back on to give the other person. Uh, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Uh, this is what we do for Spanish language pay.
I'm not following, is the other person represented or not represented?
Not represented, same with the sergeant, they're both not represented.
So one person who's not represented is getting this.
That's correct.
Pay and the other person is not.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Sheriff?
Yeah, uh, in terms of the data that you, so, uh, I think Cheryl said that you, your department collected the data, uh, for this analysis? The, the raw salary data?
Working with HR, our HR. Yeah, so we had reached out last year, started this discussion in twenty twenty. Um, and then, um, I, uh, reapproached it in January, asked if I could get some assistance, uh, collecting the data. Um, so we sent the emails and have all that back to that experience.
Great, so, uh, so are, so are you confident that this data all represents the, the correct time period? That carefully collected over the same time period?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, it, you know, I hope I answered the questions on the certification pay. I will tell you that for the non, the ten non-represented members of the sheriff's offices, it's a major sticking point just because of the past practice.
Because of what?
Just based on the past practice and that there was a change. And so, um, you know, we discussed it, I think in October last year and, um, the county said that, that, uh, it would be addressed. So, uh, and hopefully I've provided some information on that for what the certification is worth.
So do you find that most staff continue to pursue these certifications, even beyond, and you said there were others beyond the intermediate and advanced maybe? I'm assuming some specialty areas. Do you find that people take advantage of those opportunities and obtain a little additional training opportunities?
Certainly, so there is, uh, there is a mandatory, um, amount of training that certified law enforcement has to have in a three-year cycle. So you have to have eighty-four hours, um, every three years. And they break down, uh, the categories of, of training and then work leadership to a myriad of, of different subject matters. And if you hold some of these certifications or in order to obtain them, you've kind of got to shift that. Um, so you may need more leadership. For example, I hold supervisor management at executive level. Um, and in order to maintain that at the executive level, um, I've got to have a certain amount of leadership training in that three-year cycle because of the position I'm in. So, um, to kind of go back to your question, yes, I think most people want to achieve that. But, uh, we have a, you know, kind of a varying amount of, uh, education within our organization. So we have some people that have some college, we have, you know, a master's degree, we have several four-year degrees. And so if you have those, um, post-secondary degrees, then you can obtain those certifications quicker. And so it may take somebody ten, twelve years to get any intermediate sometimes, um, just based on, it's not just about time. So they'll have the time and, but they've got to get education credits and got to get more training credits. And so, um, I remember just within the last couple of years, we had a guy that was probably there fifteen years. It was just going for, uh, depending to the intermediate or advanced. But so had plenty of time at getting all the things in that category. So I would say that's a long-winded explanation, but yes.
No, exactly.
I think for the most part, people want to try to achieve those because there is an incentive. There is, there is a competition.
No, thank you for taking the time to help me understand that. And that was what I assumed, that the intent is to incentivize advancing training and acquiring additional knowledge and skills. And I think all of those are incredibly positive and it's fantastic that it's built into the model. The different ways of, of compensating that and incentivizing that, I think often get more complicated than it really needs to be. Um, but I, I think, I mean, in general, in this whole conversation, I think I, I'd like to take a minute and share like how I'm feeling about this whole thing. Cause I, my biggest fear is that we get in this conversation amongst the commission and staff that it's like this us-them conversation. And I, maybe I take that more sensitively than others, but, um, the situation that we're in and, you know, we have a set amount of money and how do we get into the middle and how do we, you know, get from the most fair spot that we can get? And how do we also consider all the other departments and all the other contracts at play? And the variables are vast currently. Um, and I think that even, my thought process even goes further, Sheriff. Where in the future, when we're asking our voters again for the levy, that this comes into the conversation, having to occur so quickly right after we pass the levy, that it has the appearance and the optics of it of raises across the board at a fairly substantial level after the levy was passed, is something that I think that you will be asked about when that levy question comes up again. How did that happen and why did that happen? And we didn't talk about that when we voted the first time. So it's sensitive to some of those future conversations for your department and for the levy, which in effect the whole county as well. So I'm hoping that there's understanding as we get closer to making these decisions and when we get into our meeting and we start pulling this stuff apart, that the, we're, we're not in like a union negotiation kind of thing, that we're really not in an us and them type conversation. We're trying to get as close as we can so that everybody feels fair and at the same time, take into account all the other contracts at play, all the other non-representants in the county and then this more future, future look at, um, the conversation that we'll be having with taxpayers again, asking for renewal on the levy and how does this offense play into that conversation? So, thank you for listening, but I just wanted to go through some of that stuff, this difficult conversation. And of course, we're dealing with it all the way around in all of our departments, but the conversation is extremely low. Seeing the nurses vacate the health department is absolutely devastating, two more maybe to naga. So this is nothing surprising for us here, for the whole county to understand and our taxpayers need to understand it as well. Um, but we're in this position of trying to, um, get as close as we can to what is sensible and fair. So I want to make sure we're not getting to an, an us versus you type conversation and get into kind of pulling this apart. But thank you for explaining the incentive pay and that makes a lot more sense to me. And, um, I hope you can understand kind of what I was sharing and how we're going.
Well, I think on, on top of that, it's, it's tough when we go through a union negotiation that gives, obviously, leapfrog's a lot more than we expected. And then we're sitting there looking at all the other departments who've gotten similar issues and, and just facing that, trying to figure out how we're going to, just like character, trying to figure out how we're going to make changes across the board and keep things equitable across the county, it's tough. And it's not, I mean, we recognize the issues and the need. It's just, there's, there's a whole lot that has to balance. It's, it's difficult.
Okay, uh, we will be talking about this in our regular meeting this evening, going through this process. Appreciate your information, help.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Mr. Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the work session is Flit River Energy Council. Hey, that's me. That's you. Glad you're here.
So, uh, so everybody get a chance to take a look at what's in the packet. I'll just give you just a brief off-the-cuff of kind of how this all came about. The Energy Council's been kind of an interesting, uh, animal in that it's non-binding, um, kind of suggestions that everybody agreed to in terms of the members of, member energy to the Energy Council. And as it transitioned into really being a council where we're making decisions and looking at projects, we started seeing, um, legislation moving and policies at the state level, uh, that affected the work that was being done in the Energy Council. But we couldn't really make suggestions or recommendations or write letters in support of bills or policies because it's multiple public bodies. And Mcket is very sensitive to, um, not crossing lines. So they keep us in a safe place, sometimes it feels a little too safe, um, because some of the legislation that's, um, moving through, especially this session, there were so many bills and so many of them had big ramifications to things that we just looked at doing in the county and at the Energy Council. But we couldn't take a position and we had folks at the state actually asking repeatedly what we thought and wanting letters of support in some cases, just couldn't do that. And so this was the suggestion that I made and the two other people made. So let's, this is what we've done at CRIA and a few other organizations that I've been off-board of is basically come up with a, a policy statement and just make it clear from the beginning that these are the guidelines that we'll use to evaluate proposals, legislation, whatever happens to be as they come forward. And if, if those fit within this criteria, then we're all comfortable saying, yes, we support specifically this aspect of this bill. So not necessarily a full bill, but say, uh, twenty twenty-one, the big energy bill to pass this session had some components that were great in terms of the work to do and some were really not great at all. And, uh, so that's where this came out of, was wanting to be able to be supportive of policies, bills that went through. And they're generally moving pretty fast, so you have to respond faster than the public entities, all public entities, their meeting takes don't line up so that you can actually get a, a letter out or, or go testify, uh, and be able to say, you know, not just, I'm the county commissioner, I'm able to say I'm a Energy Council representative. So that's what this came out of and it's really just wanting to have some clear, and they're not, they're, it's, it's going to take very specific things to be able to, um, to say we support this. But just wanting to be able to do that. So does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, that's what you're, that's what the ask is, approve the guidelines, the guy you presented.
Yep.
The, the let, is, is this specific letter that you have here, you're asking us to approve that letter?
That, yeah, well, it's basically, um, giving the approval for the Energy Council to, uh, be able to represent as the Energy Council, uh, if it fits within this policy framework.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah. We would rely on their expertise in that recommendation anyway.
And admire that size of itself and not trying to, um, get to every entity and explain what's going on. And it's just, it was frustrating to all of the Energy Council members this session to be able to, have to kind of sit there on your hands as these big bills are moving through. And we would each go testify on our own, um, whatever entity we're representing, but couldn't ever say that we were representing Energy Council.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused because I, I, that's what I thought you were doing.
No, we hadn't been.
I understand now. It's thanks for sharing it.
That's what we're asking for.
But I'm, I'm a little surprised now.
Yeah, and it is, um, you know, in, in Mcket's defense, Mcket has always been, from a legal perspective, they're the most conservative of any entity I've ever been involved with in terms of, um, what you say and do representing that organization. So, and it's, Energy Council is under the Mcket umbrella, so therefore we follow their policies.
Yeah, I think my only concern would be, um, the unintended consequence of supporting the bill that would have, uh, impacts that to the local economy could be greater than the benefit from the energy impact exclusively. So, I mean, I, I definitely am generally supportive and I'm, I'm very relaxed on security that would happen.
And that's the same, like CRIA.
Right.
You know, it's county, cities, ports, uh, basically mostly making up CRIA. And CRIA has a similar platform to this where, as we worked through this legislative session, when House Bill twenty twenty-one was coming through. And CRIA has a similar platform to this where, as we worked through this legislative session, when House Bill 2021 was coming through, we would testify that we like this one piece of this bill. The rest of it, don't like it at all because there's other alternatives out here that will do this better. And it's just, most of those sessions are so frustrating because they move so fast. You have a bill that you think is really good that's coming along, that addresses all the needs of the organization. And then all of a sudden, that one gets eclipsed by one that comes over the top of it. Takes one slice of that that you were working on and puts it into this bigger bill that has a whole bunch of things you really don't like. And then you're, and you're stuck. And so that's really, yes, it, it's unlikely that we're going to be supporting an entire bill in most instances, but we will be able to say, we like this one aspect for these reasons. And if something's going to pass, we would like this component to be in it.
I think if I give a process, it's probably better to have a conversation about, you know, not that in general as individuals, how we handle those requests, on a report. So I'm glad, I like that there's a framework at least for that.
I had, I had to sit in a dark room for about three weeks after this session ended because I was so disenfranchised with the process and the legislature. I have never been this deeply involved with legislation before, and I've never been that depressed.
Yeah, that's your problem.
I know, I, I, I recognize that.
So, so Les on your information here under the goals and whatnot, are we sign off on this? Are we saying that we really support these goals?
We already did that.
We've already done.
When we approved the energy plan and then the Energy Council formed, that was approving the energy plan, approve those goals. And that was a long process with lots of back and forth, give and take. Bob actually gave us a lot of input, specific language, and if there's pieces that Bob doesn't like, there's pieces that he does.
Yeah, I think it was good. I mean, I think that it's a goal, that that benefits positively and gives them an opportunity, I think, to have access to the government information of that. And it is, I think it's good. But I did have some issues with specifics. At the end of the day, we had the specifics, a lot of that got, they, they, basically, I think everything's optional.
Yeah, and that's, at the end of the day, I said, non-binding approval. So that, that was put in there just as background to be able to refer back to and understand of what the original intent of the energy plan was. But specifically what we're asking for now is that policy framework.
I think what I got from you said is not only is it non-binding, but no one's listening to you.
They want to listen to us. They're asking us to give it.
They want to, okay.
But we, but we couldn't through this session, other than individuals.
But your frustration, then what was your frustration?
My frustration was, I was working on different bills, not just energy, getting more involved in the process and seeing how the sausage is made, but also seeing who's the puppet master, who's controlling and how things change at the ninth hour. It completely changes the intent of a bill, which I've seen before, but I haven't ever seen it this up close and then see the dramatic difference of what's finally passed and what you think is going to pass. And I think I much more greatly understand the folks who walk out to deny a quorum.
So we're talking or against?
I'm saying, I don't care which side of the aisle you're sitting on, that not feeling heard, not feeling represented is, is frustrating. That's not my detriment.
Any more questions for Les?
Thanks for doing this.
Jeff, any questions? Okay, we've got six minutes before the regular meeting starts, so we'll stop our work session this time and start our regular meeting in six minutes. Okay, it's now six o'clock and we're going to begin the business meeting for the Hood River County Commissioner for July 19th, 2021. Are there any additions or deletions? Conflict or potential conflicts of interest?
Sharon? Just referencing about a piece about the sheriff was talking about a policy piece around additional pay for Spanish language in the non-representing category. Is that something that we would want to consider adding to our agenda today?
That would necessitate a change in the handbook, so we would have to do a little bit of a change. For the medicine board's handbook, with students being reviewed and brought to the board right before the term ended. And we had a hard time communicating with the doctor. Since picked it up, it's been processed, but that doesn't mean you can't take this one. It is an item of the year, whether it's just been cured, if you want to be able to add this new handbook.
Can we talk about it tonight in the work session action items under the Union Law Enforcement Certificate? We can talk about it then. It's okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Public comment, I understand we have someone from the public, I'd even like to speak.
Yes, Chair, Tracy, on the access to her registration, she wants to provide a comment, so check in with her.
Hi, are you able to hear me, Heidi, and everyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll go ahead here. You know, I could only hear part of Jeff's comments about the work on the joint safety complex, so I apologize if his info over my questions, which I had written kind of ahead of time a few weeks ago after being told to raise this issue. But here are some of the things that I wanted to share with you guys. I wanted to remind you that back in January this year, commissioners were told that the city of Hood River wanted to meet with county representatives to create a joint safe, public safety complex. And you all agreed to create a subcommittee, which would include Sheriff Matt English. Everyone seemed to agree that meetings and a discussion would be a good idea. And at the least, then you seemed willing to consider budgeting funds to find out how much that joint complex would be likely to cost. That's not just a political discussion, but the practical one about what a facility will look like and how it will be used. Then in February 16th, in that meeting, we learned that Commissioners Joplin and Babbitts, along with Sheriff Matt English, were the ones who were going to be on the subcommittee to talk with the city about the design and the work for the public safety complex. And Commissioner Babbitts even asked then when the meeting would be held. And Jeff Hexel said he'd spoken with Rachel Fuller, the city manager, and the city was determining who was going to represent the city and talk about meetings and a facilitator. So if the city and county are serious about doing work to prepare for a public safety facility, incorporating a courthouse, city and county law enforcement, child advocacy and more, it would seem like work needs to be happening now. And this is especially true if you expect to have any reasonable shot at describing the potential costs for a bond measure to take place in November 22, 2022. I know that I'd appreciate more regular updates on discussions and progress that are being made, if any. I've been involved in large-scale multi-use building projects in the past and just the conceptual work that's needed to determine space needs and capacities, let alone the work then to pass to cost analysis is pretty substantial. And you will have all that work plus the political considerations of a bond measure. Just a reminder, in January this year, Hood River City abandoned two years of work and all the associated expenses of that work for creating a new police facility. Despite having set a goal to create a new facility back in 2018, contracting with an architectural firm, having council members and police force members visit multiple stations and so on, they scrapped all that work in favor of joint work with the county. They did agree they would replace the old couch, but everything else went on hold. So as you go forward, even if there are no meetings being held and no work taking place on the topic, maybe just a brief mention of that fact from time to time would be appreciated. Your strategic planning session item 1.4 said you would evaluate, invest in and possibly consolidate buildings to provide safe, functional, comfortable workspaces. We know the county courthouse is one of the worst in the state, potentially not a safe place for employees. So there's a lot of things that obviously need work. Please keep us posted about who's participating in meetings or even if they're not happening at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Heidi, anyone else?
No, Chair, not that registered.
Okay, thank you. Next stop is reports. Jeff, start with you.
I escaped my report. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, Karen?
Well, I've spent quite a bit of time with the committee, so I'm glad it is. And the employees are just now unionizing, so there is a process of acquiring their first agreement, which is a process I've not experienced of being a commissioner as of yet. And it's a bit different than a renewal. And it's taken many, many months and very challenging. And I foresee many months ahead as well. So I've been spending quite a bit of time trying to understand the process, trying to be helpful in taking place there. Lots of roadblocks, lots of announcements from the union reps and the big community about what's going to be doing or not doing and how they're feeling about things. So it's been a really strange environment to operate in. But definitely an eye-opening experience to establishing an initial contract with a labor union. I've been occupying the majority of my time, so that's pretty much current court.
So you're involved directly with that process?
No, it's really this, well, there's only three members of the board in person, so the three of us are called in individually to work with the labor council. And it's just one thing after another. And the most recent one was the crisis, or mobile crisis team that was statutory, they were required to provide. The employees decided to not fill those requirements over the weekend hours unless we, unless the agency paid their health insurance deductible upfront in a cash check for the lack of policy or not. But tonight, we're not even into the contract yet. This is just to operate on the weekends. It's been an eye-opening and stunning experience. A little bit disillusioned in what you were speaking about, the legislature. Struck and stunned.
Questions for Karen?
Thank you.
Mr. Perkins?
Had loan committee meetings frequently, so been getting money out through MCAED, several different. So we've got a micro loan program. We just got the last of that money out, and we've got a larger loan fund program. And steady businesses coming in and expanding in the region. So that's a, it's a fun, it's a fun board to be on because you get to see businesses putting out how they want to expand and succeed. That's been, I don't agree, two weeks of a lot of meetings. CRIA has been, which Hood River County is a member of, CRIA's been super active. I mentioned before that we hired Mike Carter as our executive director some time ago. It's interesting when you hire a new executive director and you just don't know which direction the organization's going to go. It's been phenomenal. I will, I'll put together a more comprehensive report on kind of the change in direction that CRIA is taking. But it's really moving into more relevance for county governments and city governments and courts in being able to understand the energy landscape and policies, how to help shape policies in the energy landscape, how to attract more investment in your community. So Mike's really spending a lot of time building relationships and starting to build programs to be able to be a recognized voice, kind of that voice that county, cities, courts look to on anything to do with energy policy. So it's been exciting to see the needed to happen for some time, so CRIA is kind of regaining its relevance in the energy space. So that's been fun. That's been eating up the vast majority of my spare time.
Questions for Les? Mr. Bennett?
Well, I think the most relevant meeting event, having maybe a double bridge, the Bay State Bridge work group, Arthur comes to all of those as well. And I can't remember, on my update, I, since we only meet every so long, I forget where, what my last update was. But we've, but we were successful in obtaining $5 million from Washington and from Oregon. I think that I just had a testimony for $5 million, but it came through. So there's a significant amount of money showing up, although not very significant compared to the size of the project. So there's that money there to keep kicking this down the road. So anyway, we've got some money to work with and probably to go out at some point and do our big ask for, you know, the whole, the whole project was going to take and see if we can hopefully catch this, you know, big infrastructure push and hopefully. Our hope is that we get lucky and land the bridge. The alternative, if that doesn't happen, is we've got to come up with a different, a different plan. So there's kind of a subset of the Bay State working group that's working on that plan, not an official subset, but we've got a, there's new members of the board. My Fox is there, he's very interested in, the board commissioner very interested in the bridge project. And so it would be good to have his energy at the meetings. But yeah, we've obtained some money, which is a good thing. What I wanted to talk about though is, and I think I actually bumped into either Jeff or Rachel unintentionally at one of the hearings, I'd been asked to, you know, to give testimony at one of the meetings, the Ways and Means, I think it was or something. So I thought, sure, no problem. But I hear, you know, you're asking for money and there's a lot of money there. And I, you know, Jeff or Rachel also.
We were both on that.
Yeah, and so I'm thinking to myself, gosh, I probably should have checked in and said I was doing this if we get funding. And I'm just thinking that the bridge is, gosh, it's just not supported. I mean, that's probably obvious. So when you brought the, when you said in the, uh...
Well, you guys, you, you did good. You guys got money.
Right, but I, I was thinking, I thought Jeff was here and I'm thinking, you guys, had you been there for Heather County when you first...
Well, we were. I was, for the Rand Road project, Rachel and I were there.
But it was a little bit more nebulous, the Rand Road project, which, I mean, you know, we, we didn't even have, you know. But like, say it was a specific ask or, you know, I was, you know. Anyway, so I pointed, I said, I don't know what our policy is, I'm having to testify for that one. And I've been doing this for quite a while and considered, do we have policy on that? And when you brought more of the energy commission thing, I was going to be critical of it. And I said, well, this is a lot better than any of the other agencies have.
Your specific concern is that you're testifying against other interests.
Yeah, other interests in the area that I'm not aware of, being requested. And so that was, I guess, just kind of the concern I had. And then just recently, at our last bridge meeting, Kevin, who's kind of the point man for the bridge replacement, asked me to sign a support letter for legislation, which is a little bit more, you know, it's not quite, it doesn't have the unintended consequences of anything. But I thought, well, I'll just take it back to you guys. And so I don't know if, anyway, it's going to be something that's going to be pretty continuous, I think, with that particular committee testifying. And four months, a significant amount. So I just wondered what it would be.
This is actually, I think it's even kind of a bigger problem because the Bay State Working Group is looking for policy agreement from the entities which are members of this working group. And different entities are taking, do different, or some are considering it more seriously than others. Like, you know, Bob's taken the position, which, which I agree with, that if they ask us to agree to a policy, that that has to come before the board. So he's recently taken a letter from them and given it to Lisa for legal review. And others have said, sure, sounds good.
Yeah, it's, anyway, so, and I don't think they ever bumped into this earlier, but it's, it's pretty significant, this particular thing, we're talking large amounts of money and, you know, changes to, pretty substantial changes to legislation. So, anyway.
I think, I think generically, we as a board have agreed that this is a pretty important item for us.
I would agree to start. I mean, you know, we need a bridge.
Right, we need it ten years.
By way of, by way of policy, we're in the opposite sex list. The bridge is always in the top three, if not number one in the sex list. So the board, while they may not be necessarily forcing, it's just... forcing, it's just an ask, board is consistently making policy decisions.
But I think what it's coming in is, it's not, it's not a question of the importance of, the importance compared to other things, it's, it's specifics about how it will be implemented. So for example, this request has to do with governance. How, how will the bridge project be governed into the future? And that's fundamental legal questions. This is based on, on testimony that we heard about, about Washington state law versus Oregon state law, and things that, that seem like they should be taken pretty seriously before they're, before we give an answer, but other entities are feeling free to just give an answer very quickly.
Yeah, and there's just times where you don't have time to look at everything, and it's just a tailway or don't know. You know, it's just kind of, the pressure I'm getting is, oh, here's this document, it's been signed by everybody else the whole round. Anyway, so, and it's not that I'm thinking of myself, okay, but, you know, I'm hesitant, so...
I mean, the question is, who will be on the board for governing of a future bridge? And governing of the bridge replacement project and the future bridge? That's a pretty important question, I would think.
Yeah, I think legislation compels these entities to have that decision, but still it is defined that the number of the entities that are included in that kind of overall group. Yeah, anyway, Lisa's going to tell me if there's anything crazy in that. But it's, it's one of those things that, you know, so I suppose just maybe I could coordinate closely with you on this chair, just so that you can kind of give your...
Yeah, I, I run into this a lot where somebody asks me to do something, do something, can I do this as chair, and I'm like, okay, it's always, I feel I have to represent the board and make sure that it's not something that we would be against. Some things, this is common sense, it's a little bit greater, but other things I need to really...
But, and again, you have, you know, the example was used well here, like, Kevin Sepey, the one board document that was supporting something, someone was signing, he said, well, my list would be the chair. So if you can make that decision, that's, I don't know, I don't have, you know, anyway. I kind of went down that same road, but in my, all this thing you want to do, I question, sort of, you have concerns.
Sure.
And to kick my ass, right? I'll send it to Lisa to do that.
Everything winds up with Lisa.
Well, that's the big difference between saying, I'm representing Hutter County, and I'm the Hutter County Commissioner. And that's a, I mean, that's a, where you, you get yourself into trouble is, you know, claiming that you represent this board versus claiming your own opinion as the Hutter County Commissioner.
Right, well, and they wanted me to, you know, there was, I've been requested for county underhead.
Yeah, that's...
My name on it, I said no. I just all put it on the by-state, by-state working group letter, and that we agreed that, you know, but I'm not going to put it on the Hutter County underhead. Anyway, it's just these questions that kind of come up repeatedly, and it's one that is funny. So, you know...
It'd be, it'd, really, I wouldn't mind having a refresher on this clear. Like, these are, these are the separations of, if you're going to testify, if you're going to send a letter, if you're going to just, kind of that process we need to go through and keeping those still being in clear.
Right, it's really, it's an interesting question. What are we delegating when we assign someone else our representative? Clearly, you're sitting in a meeting, you're not going to get on the phone every, every time somebody comes up and say, hey, is it okay if I do this, is it okay if I do this? But at the same time, I think, I think Bob said the appropriate caution when the question is, so how will Hood River County be represented for the next five to 10 decades with respect to a bridge across the Columbia River? Probably more important to be discussed.
I feel like you should all, yeah, for signing on to something, you should all be able to understand it.
You know?
No. That's it. So that was a little bit much for our...
No, I would know, of course.
I've been in North Port, you know, it's one of, we had a nice chat back room, safe. It was good.
I was wondering...
So I, I actually, so did my business, and I was wondering if that was because nobody, very few people got hurt in 2020, so they get, I'm near the amount of claims is normal.
Everybody's home, sick now, people are going to wrap their bubble around.
If I was, I think that there was, yeah, but...
Okay, Commissioner Powell?
Okay, so all three of my boards, probably the same tier, have been going through budget cycles, so it's been especially busy. In each of the, with Mid-Columbia Community Action, Mid-Columbia Housing, in both of those cases, there's a lot of, it's much more complicated now than ever before, because there's all this money flowing through these organizations for dispersal for specific COVID-related programs. And so I won't bore you with the details, but, you know, tons of federal money coming through and being dispersed in our community, and I think it's, this is all very important and very great stuff. And so we've been through the budget cycle and confirmed all of that, finished that process. Community Action Council, there have been a bunch of challenges, internal challenges, which our new executive director has dealt with very well, so things are moving forward quite well. And it's evidenced by ability to get a cooling shelter pulled together very quickly over the, over the period when we had 112 to 13-degree temperatures, very much needed, and they were able to work with partners to set up the cooling shelter at the, at the fire station. I think that was very well needed. So happy that that happened quickly. And Visit Hood River, I don't think I reported on the strategic planning session that we had to, to ring a bell with you. Okay, I'm seeing blank looks, so I will give sort of a brief overview. We had a, had a, an in-person meeting at Stavenstone to talk about what's, what's the next year old for us. And it was, it was very interesting, because Rachel Fuller was there representing the city, and I was there representing the county. And then we both, we worked together to help them appreciate and understand that there's a great need as Visit Hood River looks into its future. There's a great need for it to, to, to consider what, what is being done and what can be done to mitigate the effects of tourism on the community, as opposed to what can be done to maximize the tranche lodging costs. And really, they have the view that their goal and their purpose is to get as many TLT dollars generated as possible. And, and there was also a belief that the community doesn't understand the benefits of tourism, and therefore they need to do a better job of communicating the benefits of tourism. And Rachel actually said very well, she said, this is not a marketing problem. And I know that that represented what this group has said before, and that the two of us together have really, you know, worked to make it clear how, what our role is in this, in terms of representing the city and county, the city and county interests. And they think it's hard, and they've listened very carefully, and I, and I feel like what we said was reflected well in the strategic planning session. And of course, we have to see what happens over the year, but it certainly, I didn't get any shock looks or any horrified reactions. I, I, in fact, I'd have a solid meeting next week on the subject. So I think, I think we communicated what needs to be communicated, and moving forward, we'll have to just see whether in the long term, so I will say, Visit Hood River is really eager to reestablish the county's share of the TLT as something going to Visit Hood River, as opposed to currently going to the Tucker Park, et cetera. And I made it clear that it is important to demonstrate a value that the commission will, demonstrate something the commission will value. And what I believe the commission would value is, is an explanation of how the, how these, these monies can be used to help the community deal with the effects of tourism. And they, they taught me the word that's used now is destination management, instead of destination, attraction, I forget, that's correct. The old word was, but rather than, destination marketing is what they used to call it, and now it's destination management, recognizing that there's more to the job than just marketing. Interesting subject. I, I didn't think I was going to like it, but I've been enjoying it, so I think that covers everything, yeah.
Good. Thank you. Had any ODOT meetings since our last one, but there was an affordable housing group that got together virtually this past week. There's probably 100 people on that call, but I don't think any of you will.
No, my calendar said affordable housing meeting, there was no information, I could not for life remember what it was, and I couldn't find it in my email. So I should have called you, I didn't realize that you might know.
Yeah. It was interesting, it was groups from Washington and Oregon, and Nate Stice got me involved in it, so I listened to it for about half, two hours. It had a lot of different speakers, Joel Matson was on there, Leslie Noramore from WAGAP, which I wasn't sure what that is, Washington or something. A lot of them were from Washington, had a little bit different perspective, but they all talked about affordable housing problems. They had a Hispanic representative from Washington that spoke and talked about the farm worker situation with housing. A Native American spoke and talked about affordable housing for the Native Americans and their situations. Lot of general discussions on this meeting, and I know we're going to have follow-up meetings, but it was just mostly informational and interesting, and it was obvious, there's a lot of differences between Oregon and Washington in terms of affordable housing, in a way. And they did ask questions about our development excise tax, where's it going? Kate McBride was on the call, so she, she talked about what we're looking at right now. Cascade Locks, we had a couple of interesting things that I've gone to the last couple of weeks. They had a ribbon cutting at the Ford area for frame, and there's another company that repairs seconds from existing clothing companies. I can't remember the name of the company. What's it called? Pretty Well Works. Yeah, anyway, that, that company's just taken off, it's just going from like six employees to six. And they built this 45,000 square foot building, because they're bringing in so much supplies and keeping it there, and then they should announce something. It's just gone crazy. The frame prop, production and storage plant that they're building is beautiful, I mean, it's just amazing what they're going to do there. Another incredible operation that's taking place at Cascade Locks. And then this last week, Gorgeous Brewery, which just is opening up on the main street in Cascade Locks, had a shop opening with all the locals. I got invited, so I went, and wow, what a super operation that's going to be as well. Just unbelievable, and it looks like they're going to have condos right behind it, because people want to come and stay, as a destination resort, and get the locks now, and so, anyway. And it, it rivals with one across the street.
Thunder Island?
Which one?
Thunder Island?
Thunder Island, yes, excuse me. Yeah, I, they're very similar, and have seven stories, third stories, deep views, quite the operation, you can see where the research is taking place, just interesting how they've developed, so Cascade Locks is amazing, Thunder Island. But anyway, that's my report. Um, next stop, after reports, consent agenda.
Who will be approved, consent agenda is presented?
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Joplin?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Nice to see the tempers, surprises are still...
Oh, yeah.
Still good.
Yeah, I'm surprised, brother, because I, I heard the temperature futures were way down.
I think it percolated, I guess.
Yeah. Doug was hustling to get sales like that. Several months.
Chair, I had a couple of comments about the department reports. Do you want to do that in your report section or in the packet?
Oh, okay, yeah, we can go back to that. Chair, go ahead.
Well, the main one was, I was just trying to draw attention as far as future conversation around the ARPA funds for the budget finance department, and looking at the staff, the staff stress that they're experiencing with the turnover and the last module yet to launch for the accounting software. But I think that we should be sensitive in our conversations when we start getting to our 2021 allocations for the ARPA funding, exactly how much burden that places on budget finance, and how do we also accommodate, supporting that department to be successful when we start moving these dollars around. Like, in reading their report, I mean, it raised some significant concerns for myself, for all of you as well.
All right, Jeff?
I would agree.
That's a good point.
Call bad luck, I don't know what you want to call it, but the worst bad luck deal is something I could, that's a good part. We have all the informants that...
Jeff, can you use your mic?
All the informants had impacts, but there's been pretty acute, you know, especially when you think that they're going through an Android software conversion, for which we suspected going into that, there were issues with the old system, and there were issues, we're dealing, dealing with those now, we continue to deal with those things. It's a process, we'll get there, it's taking longer than it takes, but hope in those smaller issues, we'll get there.
I guess I'll cut up.
I was just, there was a mention, Tina made a mention of having to get her personal information in order to receive the first tranche of funding in, in her report, and I, I read that a couple of times, tried to read between the lines.
Yeah, the Treasury wanted five minutes of data in order to access the funds, and that's, and the river county, that's everywhere.
Right, there's 3,500 counties in the US or something like that, and they're sending huge amounts of money to all of these counties, many of them, they have, you know, one person whose eyes are on this stuff, there's, you know, we're, we're a big enough place that we have multiple eyes on any dollar that, that, that we're not likely to, to see the sorts of problems, but you can certainly imagine why they're, why they want to make sure they know where the money's going.
Yeah, I just, I felt like I was reading her consternation and kind of felt maybe a little put upon, being put in that position, and she didn't know if that was, if that had happened before, or this is something brand new, we cannot see.
That certainly is not related to that thing of scrutiny as it relates to accessing funds. I haven't said that, I bring this in front of the President, the federal government, I, you sign this form, this thing, this application, they're clearly liable for it. If there's anything wrong with your work, you're liable for it at a personal level. I, I mean, pretty harsh from the federal government.
I don't know how many of you sat through the OHA discussions, but there would always be a guy from FEMA on there, and he was talking about the FEMA monies for the fires in, in Oregon, up in the last, you know, the labor grid fires, and 85% of the claims that were made were fraudulent, right? So there's just industries that people have set up to take advantage of these programs. So I, I don't think it's surprising that the federal government is recognizing that some accountability and is attempting to, to tighten things up as much as they can.
Good point. You just got something, I think, that you...
I did want to add a comment, though, and I'm going to say this really carefully. I think that we are lucky in this case, you know, there's a bright spot in this, which is, you know, that we have Tina in a very difficult position, but we also have a, a, our, we have our administrator who is really strong in this area. And so I'm much more comfortable than I would be in a normal situation, that, that there are two eyes that I trust, looking at everything here. So, you know, you can get in really bad trouble when you have so much turnover in the finance department, and things, nothing much carefully, and things, things can come loose, and you can really have bad results. And I, you know, I hope I don't, I'm sure I'm not going to come back and regret this. I, I really feel comfortable that because of the staffing that we have at the top in this situation, that yes, it's a terrible problem, but it doesn't put us in danger of, of bad actions happening, getting us in serious problems.
I completely agree, I just think that as the additional burden goes into that department for allocating managing, first thing, everything involved, and then at the same time, the department head is onboarding new staff... department head is onboarding new staff, creates a situation where issues can occur, or burnout can occur, overload, all kinds of things, I think you really need to be sensitive to. I don't think that ARPA is going to be a light list in the budget department.
Anything else?
My only other comment was, in the district attorney's report, which just happened to be here, there's a piece here where it says there's some discovery checks looking to be deposited, needing to have a line item created in our budget, is there anything in there that the board can be helpful with, or needs to do, or, okay, internal, what does the next year have to be told? I was at the reports were great, the prevention department and the health department's reports were great.
Okay, move on to the work session, action items, strategic planning goals.
I am not requesting any action at this point.
Okay. Just to recall, so we already adopted this plan, right? Because I remember, I had asked for a change, and I see the changes in there, so this is it, the plan is as presented.
Yeah, if you can change it, if you want to, it's your plan.
No, but this is something we've already, this isn't just the draft that you produced, this is what we adopted. Thank you.
ARPA funding. Jeff?
As I alluded to earlier, there are some things on this list that if possible, I would appreciate some direction, and they're specifically those things that involve hiring of staff, because of lead time, and there's a few times to do that, so I don't know if the board is supportive of these items, but the only way I know is if I ask, who can ask? Land use support, you've seen the backlog, the DA support, you've seen the backlog, this one is a staff issue, it's the consultant, is the affordable housing department, you see, this is actually a contractor, the information technology assessment, the trauma intervention program, the forest recreation response, and the organizational resilience assessment, those are the ones that I would ask for approval to begin work on those. As it relates to the, there was some discussion this evening, the community recovery coordinator and grant manager, we need to define that better than what it is right now, and I would go back to the board to ask for that, probably sooner rather than later, but right now, I don't have a job description, and I want to get that, like we did with the COVID recovery coordinator, we actually had a job description for that, Chris and I were working on it, Chris was actually looking for somebody, I mean, that has been a topic of discussion over time, and so when we got to the point where you all said it had done, we were well along in the process, and so I'd like to be well along in the process before I come back to you and say it was good.
That was the other piece that I was going to say, I would love to see move soon, so, yeah.
Could I get, the point is I don't understand is the resilience assessment, I understand the pandemic, the pandemic deeper inside of that, but I didn't quite follow what the resilience assessment was about.
So, the notion is, and it really came out of the strategic planning session, number goal one point three, or action one point three, I think really says it very well, establish relationships and systems for robust cross-departmental resources, that really is what it is about. Basically, where do we have synergy between departments where we can help each other, and specifically as it relates to pandemic support, or anything, or any type of that process.
Okay, so there are experts in this, and we're going to hire an expert who's going to tell us how we should staff, or how we should adjust staff responsibilities to do this?
Or things that we could do that would enhance our ability to maximize resource sharing across departmental lines.
I mean, this really sounds like cross-departmental efficiency, I mean, to me, that's what it sounds like, from a big picture.
Yeah, it is, that's all part of it.
When they siloed.
But I also heard about cross-training within individual departments also, right?
Well, that's possible, that would be a recommendation that would come out of this if that were the case. So, this is organizational development type work, so that's the kind of people you're looking for, is basically have a fresh set of eyes, what are you doing, what are you trying to get done, and are you organized appropriately, and are you supporting each other appropriately? If not, where can we make improvements to make sure that it's doing now? This came up, you know, in January, but, you know, the reality is, you know, as I look at it, and I look at the administrative code, your administrative code is really bold, and it basically forms how your organization works, and this becomes a basis for potentially how you really do it evaluating your administrative code. You have to have it, but it's really where it should be in order to make the organization effective and cohesive. Of course, my perception is, no, it's okay, organizations don't function that way, for some time, and so, you know, this needs to be simplified to allow people and empower people to be the very best they can, and do the very best job they can, as opposed to putting them in office and having them follow rules. I'm sorry, that's not the first, but that's the way I look at it.
I assume you wouldn't have presented this if you didn't think that we could accomplish this without overburdening staff?
You know, this will be driven out of my office. Yeah, it will take staff time, because the consulting team that comes in is going to have to talk to people, but of course, the work isn't done by staff, instead by consultants. And, you know, this may take a little bit of time, but you need somebody other than the people that are in your organization to basically gather up the information, and, you know, make some assessments. But I do believe that the people that work at the county probably have some great ideas about what could become better, and how we can make things better, and how we can work better together, so you've got to ask them, you've got to involve them, and that's at least part of it.
Good with spending our first dollar on this list of items that you proposed?
Yeah, so, just to clarify, you're looking for that, those dollars to be spent across the entire period of time as well, not just for this first year?
Well, that would be the expectation, that would be particularly for those departments who are getting staff people, the other ones are shorter-term duration.
But did you total them out for that?
I did not isolate those, I should have, I can go back to do that, and report back to the board, you need that information.
I just want to kind of have an idea how much money we have left, so, but I'm supportive of the numbers. I didn't write it out, I didn't write it out in every single one, you already have it.
So, this isn't the number you're looking for?
No, it's fine, I, I'm supportive of the, of the request.
Honestly, I mean, I think it's, basically, in this year, it looks like the five forty-four, five hundred forty-four thousand less than eighty thousand. Because we talked about everything, but it's the public health department.
Part of it. Also, it would be the whole amount.
I think pretty much is, I don't see anything on the list, on that list that we did, oh, well, we didn't include building improvements.
Yes.
But we did include the IT assessments, I believe, did you say, Jeff, IT assessments?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you did. Community cover grant manager, the trauma intervention program, the forest recreation response, pandemic resilience assessment.
So, the first year, the five forty-four is probably was pretty good, or something around that number. I mean, these are all ballpark estimates, so, except for the staffing, staffing numbers, we actually use the budgetary numbers for those, but even the rest of it is over estimates.
Like fifty-seven, eight-eighty wasn't just something that popped into your head for the DA's office?
Correct, those were budget numbers.
So, Jeff, you're looking for approval from us to start the process of these?
Yeah, yeah, largely because there's lead time with this stuff, when you're in some positions, and so, if I know that it's okay, then we can start that work.
I hope you have better luck hiring people to come in.
Well, that will be a challenge. We, it's just incredible, I mean, for any of you that are in the hiring market, it is incredibly difficult.
It's interesting, I just hired an equipment operator, and got three really good candidates, you know, and hired at this salary, I wouldn't hire, I was shocked.
So, what was your application for?
Uh, they were all coming off, coming from a private contractor.
But did you have ten, fifteen, or?
No, I had three, I had, but I actually had four, I had four, but I had three good ones, two really good ones, either of which I would have been thrilled to have, and they had CDLs, which is, which is the tough, that's where I was going, I'm never going to get anybody, so I was kind of shocked, and that kind of made me wonder if there's folks that are at a point in their career where they're looking for a little more safety and security and health benefits, and so, it seems like maybe there's a demographic out there that may be looking down the road and thinking that maybe this is a, like, that a little more safety is a better place to be right now.
Like, are you saying maybe public's a little bit better than private?
In some respects, I think that there's, at certain point in people's careers, I think that there's a, so, I just found it curious, because I was terrified of having somebody retire when they did, especially in that position, so, be curious to see how it goes, as you go.
Well, you know, we just came in first, and I was terrible.
I have a friend who's a nurse, and I was trying to encourage him to move back here, and he said he can't, he can't find housing, he just wouldn't consider it because there's no housing, or he'd love to move back here, but there's no housing. I did my best.
Do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion? I'll make a motion that we ask our administrator to start the process of making the budget adjustments to fund the items listed on this sheet.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Joplin?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
The board may remember this, all of this money is actually appropriated, it's just not appropriated properly where it needs to be, and so there may be some adjustments in terms of budget, but the whole amount is appropriated, we won't extend it all, but it's all appropriated.
Okay, so, that's all you needed on that, Jeff?
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, non-union law enforcement certificate pay. Jeff?
I was going to say, as it relates to the language intended, what I would propose if the board is interested in moving on that sooner rather than waiting for it to be approved.
Use your mic, please, Jeff.
Did you break it already? We can't give you anything!
It's hopping off, the little puppy things, I don't know, maybe I taught...
The puppy thing, the stick guard.
Yeah, something. What I would suggest is that we just do that one amendment and get it out of the mail hole, and get it done if the board is interested in that work, and I'm afraid it might take a while to get the whole package, it is an issue for work.
I support that concept.
That's the best we can do?
Yes.
Okay. One comment that took place during the work session, I want to make it perfectly clear that the county commissioners did not approve the raise that went to the deputies, that was, went through a process, what was the process called?
Arbitration.
Binding arbitration.
Binding arbitration, and that was the decision the binding arbitrator made, and so to say that in the past, we've always given the sergeants the same thing as the deputies as far as certificate pay, and so, that was only when we approved it, not when somebody else approved it, so that's quite a difference between this process and what's taken place in the last several years.
So, is what you're saying, that there isn't a, there isn't, there isn't a precedent to this?
It's totally different. Yeah.
Well, the precedent is that it has been all equalized, but it also has been supported and approved or through mediation, that's the usual level.
Right, yeah, and even, even in mediation or arbitration, we've never had that massive of a jump, I mean, that was, that was sixteen percent, it was sixteen, eighteen, eighteen percent, I mean, we've not, plus the certification pay.
Over three years.
Yeah, but that's, it's just a very large jump.
Discussion?
I think Steph did a really good job at explaining what the overall goals were, and I agree with the goal of, basically, we have to be fair to everybody, and we've made a commitment to get salaries in line, we should do the minimum damage to that process that we can, and I fear that any, that if we are to simply silo off the non-represented law enforcement and address those issues fully now, that would not allow for fair consideration of all the other departments, all the other unions and non-union contracts, non-union and non-union employees all deserve the same consideration, so, I'm in favor of the administrative proposal, which follows the fine line of saying, look, we've got a few situations which are clearly untenable given the binding arbitration results, but beyond that, we're not going to take special action on this set of employees until we're ready to take action on all the players.
Well said, well said.
So, I have a concern with that, and I have gone around and around and around about the toll issue, and I think all of you know, I'm extremely livid to giving up, to coming back around, and trying to channel Arthur to not be emotional and look at the facts, and not to focus too much on how the decision was made, which I was very hung up on that for a very long time, but really what's at play is the decision was made, and the taxpayers now will be giving the union these eighteen percent raise, and then taking a look at what takes place inside a department when this occurs, and what's currently occurring with this disparity, and what would I, if I had worked in that department, where would my position be, and how would I be feeling about this situation? So, I'm trying to take all of those things into consideration, and then I'm also trying to take into account all these other variables we have, open contracts, and the resulting decisions of those contracts, and how will that affect the non-represented employees in those other departments that work along with those union members? So, it's trying to, as I said earlier, get to a compromised position where it seems fair, and we're kind of somewhere in the middle, and not everybody gets what they want, I don't think the administrative proposal is adequate. And the incentive certifications, allocations that go on here, there are multiple different things here, I'm far more interested in incentivizing employees to further their knowledge and training, because that does create a better servant for the community, and so I find great value in providing incentive programs and pay, equivalent pay to achieve... to achieve an additional training. So I'm probably more interested in potentially matching the four and eight for the non-represented folks. And again, coming from a position, if I worked in this department, would I put the extra effort to gain another certification when the person sitting next to me would get twice or three times the amount that I would get? Would it be worth it? And placing the value to the community on that individual actually obtaining the certificate, I think there's value in incentivizing those types of personal investments for employees. So in my sole circle of my thought process, it has taken a good month and more, and I've gone, like I said, being absolutely livid to coming back around to this is the table we're sitting at, and this is what we're dealing with, and it's not going to change between now and the end of the year. And we're going to get our sticker shot from our salary comparison that's coming in. And, um, that's why I'm saying that the administrative proposal does not go far enough. And I think that it will create some, um, internal problems, but I don't think that works.
I guess on top of that, what's our timeline? So we go out, we do this analysis, what kind of timeline are we looking at before we actually are able to take that information and make changes to address some of these situations where we know we have inequity?
The, uh, the desired timeframe is a little bit effective.
Okay, so we're, we're effectively a year, a year out.
So for clarification, when I look at the administrative proposal, it is essentially the board approved?
Uh, it's slightly more than that. And, and that was deliberate for two reasons. Uh, one is you, uh, pointed out earlier, it didn't have to do with the two costs. And then secondly, it, it did improve, uh, the compression issue a little bit more in some ways. And so we were trying to make some further headway with the compression issue.
Well, help me understand that, because I'm looking at the patrol sergeant's table, and I'm looking at the administrative proposal, the minimum and the maximum, and then I look at the board approved, the minimum and maximum, and I keep the same numbers.
Uh, you have to look at, um, the column on the.
The far right, so it's the.
A thousand dollar difference.
Using the different models, the incentive pay gets us to a thousand dollar difference?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to reiterate that I don't find that adequate.
I'm not completely following your logic, though. Uh, I, I think maybe we're viewed differently is that I, I'm not sure the incentive pay, I, I don't know that incentive pay is an appropriate term, because I think in this case virtually everyone has, gets this incentive pay. So it's basically saying there's a different formula for calculating their salary. It happens to come in two pieces instead of one. Uh, because it's expected, I, I don't think you're gonna find a patrol sergeant that hasn't completed the certificates. I guess I should have asked.
I guess the question is, what's that look like in other organizations? So that's, that's the question that comes to my mind is.
Well, that's where we have the right column.
No, no, I'm saying the number of certified, advanced certifications in patrol sergeants in other organizations. So yes, our organization may all have that, but other organizations may not. So just because we, they all have that right now, it's probably a function of how the organization has, has set things up to be. So, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I'm just not sure that's true, but I, I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, it, 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 I, I, in my experience, similar thing with fire department, where absolutely everyone has a particular certification.
I don't think that's the case with law enforcement. When you start looking across between cities and counties, I, I, I don't think that that's the case around the state.
Are we getting feedback here?
I think it's mine, I think it's mine.
Oh, okay, so stop pointing that at me, point it at you, yeah, point it at you. I did get a text from somebody who's saying they're having trouble hearing us also. Why do you sound so loud?
Because I've got my mic in the right.
My, my, how do I?
I don't even know where that is, I've got it figured out. Which means I'm gonna ask you a question. Are some of these things we're talking about right now gonna be addressed through study?
Yes.
I, I think that that's kind of, I mean, initially, I, I, I think I would agree with Commissioner Jofflin that I, I feel like this maybe isn't enough. I think the point is, we're acknowledging that as part of this, but we, uh, I think to go too far looks like, I mean, it's like the other path, we go with the green, uh, let's use that term. Uh, the green row, maybe we'll, uh, yeah, I, I think that it attempts to take care of all of it right now. And, and given that we're going to the study, I'd like to see the results of that. I mean, I want to acknowledge that we think we're low, and, and then, you know, but I, the one thing I would add is that, uh, I, I think I'm more, I like the idea of a percentage with respect to these incentives, because then I think it does match up closer to being a component of their salary and something that's impacted by their annual colon. Simplifies, I think, the way that the process works, negotiations. So, but that's just my opinion.
Um, recognizing, we thought about this, recognizing that this is an interim solution, and that this is a one-size-fits-all solution. Uh, you're, you're basically trying to thread the needle with all of these positions. So you have two that are way over market. You have one that's spot on with what's being proposed, and two that are under, and only compression with sergeants.
So we're sitting here staring at sergeants who need to be looking across the board?
When, when you get into the other study, you will be able to make adjustments on a per position basis. That's not what we're looking at right now.
Right.
You may have these flat dollar amounts now, but when we come back, these may all change the percentages. And what you may find is the salary numbers all go up. And maybe the incentive is three and five, or maybe it's four and eight, but the numbers could look very different in terms of how they play out in the total. When you look at your men and your bats, what you're gonna try to do is try to equalize those to some degree, which you're also gonna be looking at total compensation. Um, and you can look at a, at a per position basis. So the next full round, you don't have to look at the nine-one-one supervisor, or the nine-one-one commander, or the parole formation commander, you can just look at the sergeant. Right now, you're trying to do a one-size-fits-all, and that's part of the difficulty with the process that we're using right now.
Well, why are we using that process? Why are we not looking at the two ones that are in jeopardy of compression?
Because we, we don't have the study and the full breadth of the analysis to be able to make those kinds of recommendations.
Oh, we don't need the study to determine that these two positions are in jeopardy?
It's a question of equity amongst these two positions versus same nurses.
So you're saying any decision we make today has to go across all of these positions, even though some of the positions seem to be?
Yes.
And it has to be that way, we have no other options?
That's what I would like, yes. That's what the sheriff asks for, I agree with him on that one. It's a question of equity.
But like the nine-one-one supervisor, he's not proposing an adjustment.
What's that?
Like the nine-one-one supervisor, he's not proposing an adjustment.
Not in pay.
He is in the certs.
But he is in the certs.
The certs are the same across all of these.
And the same with the commander.
Yeah.
There's no proposal across the board on that one.
And so for the county, the county.
Like, no, you chose adjustment on the certs for the.
Yes, there is, nine-one-one commander, two fifty, four hundred.
How much is the nine-one-one supervisor?
Yes, this is, it's two fifty and four hundred.
Their current pay is, is a dollar per month, it's not a percentage. So we have two different sets of employees who are paid on a different basis, and you're trying to get them in line, which makes sense, but I'm not sure this, I shouldn't do it.
The current is one twenty-five, two hundred.
And the sheriff is proposing nothing.
Four hundred. So, yeah, but.
Pink line.
Right, but what we're doing is across the board.
But Jeff just said we have to do what the sheriff proposed, and he's not proposing anything for this position.
No, I agree with him as it relates to cert pay, that it should be equal for this, for these employees. So if you, if you do four and eight, you should do four and eight for everybody. If you do three and five, you do three and five for everybody. If you do two fifty and four hundred, you do, you do that for everybody. The pay has already been determined, the board did that, and that was applied equally to everybody with the two with the two. The sheriff proposed something different, that was not included in the administrative proposal, and the board can do that or not.
Yeah, I don't understand the bounce back to forth on the incentive pay part of the table. Like, the board approved a three and a five for the nine-one-one supervisors, but the administrative proposal jumps back to the flat amount per month, two fifty and four hundred dollars. Why?
Um, for cost containment reasons.
Does that save more money than the three percent and the five percent?
What it allows you to do over time is the dollars stay flat, so every time you get a raise, this doesn't automatically go up. It, it, it's a management.
So it's preferable to have a flat dollar amount administrative?
There's a fixed value to the training, and everyone's getting the same training, and there's a fixed value to that, it doesn't depend on what their base salary is.
Un, unless that's the structure, like you said originally, is that their salary is a, basically, if everybody has that,
that's what, that's the union, the union contracts have that, right?
Like what Jeff's saying, this, this is, until we get to where we have the information to make the comprehensive overhaul, this fixes the costs. So if there's a salary increase, a percentage increase, it doesn't affect that certification pay. So from a budgetary standpoint, we know exactly what we're paying for the next year.
Well, we already approved a percentage, we're undoing that.
Yeah, I, I recognize that, but we also are now doing something completely different than we had necessarily expected to do. It's interim, I mean, we're, we're certainly buying time until we.
Yeah, this has been a difficult process for all the employees involved, for commissioners, and for Cheryl and I, because this isn't, this normally doesn't happen. I mean, you just don't lose a binding arbitration case every year, fortunately, and so, um, when you're dealing with the impact of that as, as you can, so you can come up with a better solution. And the sheriff is correct, there are legitimate issues here that need to be addressed, and we can see that. And we're trying to find a solution and get this partway there, um, so we can hopefully have a more elegant solution.
I, I don't know if this will help, but if you do the math on, uh, you know, I, I, I took the, the, um, the patrol sergeants and looked at kind of the average in the administrative proposal, the average salary, and then look at the percentage, and it's not that far off from two and fifty a month or four hundred a month. In fact, one of them is dead on, the other one was off by a, by a, by a small amount. We're not talking about a greatly different.
So why not just math the four and eight percent?
Well, because it won't be the same for the others, it's gonna be all over the place. Cause the salaries are, are different.
Yeah, there's like a break even point where the.
It happens, if you have this break even at the.
Eight thousand.
The middle, eight hundred sergeant.
And you guys feel that saving the amount of money in that incentive pay category is worth it rather than smashing the forty? Cause I don't. How many hard times am I understanding how you feel it? That's the better way to go. I understand that there's a cost containment issue, and then, and you could argue all day long about whether an incentive or qualification or certificate has a set value or not based on how long you've maybe been in your position or not. Sure, it's a great argument, but I guess it brings me back to this element of, um, creating inequitable and healthy space within the county, and the conversations that we've had before about raising wages so that we have a healthy workforce. And even if that means that we have to reduce services or reduce quantity of staff, that was a commitment that we made.
When we have the data to do that, yeah, we're not, we don't have the.
That's the point, we're, we're, we are.
You guys already know we're going to be incredibly low. You're gonna wait, have everybody wait a year because you wanna get a report for something and.
I don't know the data that we're gonna get, it's gonna look like this data. I don't.
It's almost, this is, the compression analysis is done compared to results of binding arbitration. So when we look at the, uh, when we have the, uh, the analysis done, the analysis is going to be done in absolute sense for people in this position in other areas. It's, so you, you, you're drawing conclusions that all of these positions are way behind, which I think Steph has said they don't believe is the case. We know that at least one of them is.
I think you're getting a big stack, you're getting some that are, are competitive, and you're getting some that are gonna be way off. And some that, I, I don't think you're finding anybody, obviously, I was surprised when I saw the supervisor and the leader, and saw those numbers. Having said that, those positions are difficult to fill. But I think it's, it's not going to be low in every position, I don't expect to see that. I just, I don't, based on some of the work that we've done since I did here.
I'm not tremendously comfortable with taking one department and putting them at the front of the line and dealing with them now, but I'd be convinced by Steph's argument to go there. But if I were to choose a group to separate out, you know, this probably wouldn't be it.
So tell me again the reasoning behind, um, not making a decision that may, um, I don't know, I can't get it correctly, but benefits the non-represented staff in this department. How that decision may have an effect on the open contract? Why is that part of our consideration? I don't, how, what's the connection or the threat or the risk there?
I guess that's not part of my decision making from this.
Okay.
For me personally, that's not. I'm more looking across the whole organization and knowing that we're moving to having really good data to work from, to be able to make decisions. And so I'm the harder in the, and I don't, I don't wanna make a decision right now when we know we've got all these other decisions we have to make, inequities in other positions and other departments. I'd rather work from a place where we have that across the board and start making bigger, uh, decisions in the organization as a whole. It, it just, I'm excited to actually have this for the first time ever.
You're not gonna have it for six months, and it's not gonna be just seven years?
Yeah, it's gonna take some time, that's just the reality. You can't fix it right now. You can't fix the whole organization right now. You can't, by putting a Band-Aid on this one spot, you're not, you're not solving the problem. We need to solve the problem across the board. So it, it is gonna take patience, and it's, yeah, it's frustrating to wait for six months or a year, but that's what you have to do to do it right.
No, both of them are, we're not off by seventy-five percent.
I'll be honest, this is better than I thought it was gonna be. So in looking at these numbers, it's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be. Yes, uh, there's, things need to be addressed, but it's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
Well, I struggle with waiting for years to adjust the situation. And I, I struggle with asking anybody to wait a year.
But we're asking every department to wait, I mean, that's the reality. You've got, you've got shortage of nurses, we've got budget finance, we've got all these positions that we're gonna need to be hiring and trying to retain, so they're every bit as crucial and critical to the function of the organization, and they're every bit as overworked. And having issues in terms of pay, it's, it's not just this.
Let me, let me approach it from a different direction. I don't find the data that I've been given here adequate to make this decision. If this is the only data we're going to get in December, then I will be disappointed. To me, this is a short form analysis of this problem. I've seen, I've seen compensation analysis before, and the ones I've seen are a lot more complicated than this, have a lot more variables, have a lot more consideration, I don't know, Steph. Okay, so, so we will see a lot more on these positions than just what we have here.
So what we're talking about is an interim fix, and so we wait for the grand plan to unfold. And in the interim fix, we're pretty much doing nothing.
You think this is nothing?
A thousand dollars a year.
Which one are you looking at?
She's looking at patrol sergeant.
So we're going from a minimum of?
Well, the under sheriff goes from.
Yep.
Goes up twenty bucks. Patrol sergeant.
He approved with our, like our last best offer, right? We didn't, we haven't actually done that.
No, we approved it. We approved that too, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's existing today.
Yeah, that's part of, so really.
So that, so that is the change.
The under sheriff's not hurt out of line when you look at the salary comparison and you look at compression, that's not really where the issue is. That's kind of the point is we're looking at all of these positions and really that patrol sergeant is the spot that.
So the other consideration for Cheryl and I, and this is sort of a past practice for the county, I guess they've done these kinds of analysis, is it plus or minus five, believable? I'm not saying that's right or I necessarily agree with it. That's just sort of benchmarked, that's a little passive.
Plus or minus five percent difference?
Yeah, in terms of market comparability. And so, you know, when you look at these things, part of the goal was to get them so they're not more than five percent lower.
So the under sheriff's off by two point six percent of the costs. That's not very much.
It's the sergeant's one that's four point three five.
So how many patrol sergeants are on staff? And how many?
Patrol sergeants are less than five percent off.
And again, it's compared to an analysis, it's not a full analysis.
Yeah, right. This is just a half.
And I beg, I'm not seeing that much into what your, the comparison salary. I mean, I think you have to consider.
What are you putting into this?
The union, where the union landed and the eighteen percent. I mean, you have, that has to be part of this conversation.
This isn't part of the union confrontation. I'm not following how that.
He's relying this decision on what's the salary comparison of the information provided at this point. And yes, no, it's not in depth and it's not highly analytical, but it's a base figure that was been provided. He's making the comparison, well, they're not that far off with the comparison salary.
No, but it's not compared to the union.
You're not taking into consideration the fact that.
No, it's not compared to.
Their wage rate just had an eighteen percent and a four percent, eight percent adjustment.
Not, not given by us.
This is, this is compared to people doing the same job in five other cities, in five other counties.
They're less than five percent off.
So in your decision-making process, are you only going to take the comparables in the other communities or are you also going to take what the other staff members in the department are making due to the union?
And the lot of, and a lot of other information that we don't have right now.
Yes, or what?
I would definitely consider compression because you have to. But only as a.
Component.
Secondary component. Primary component is doing the same job in, in a similar community. Similar skills, similar people, similar community, whatever they've been paid to do that job.
And also across the organization in terms of, you know, what kind of responsibilities you have within this organization. Also it's a play, bigger analysis.
Well, I'm interested in entertaining compression. I just don't have a clue what it means, fourteen versus sixty. You know, like the percentages, you're looking at what the compression is. I know what it means statistically on here, but I don't know how that impacts. Yeah, I don't know what it should be. And so that figure out is really intriguing to me and I think that it, you know, but that's why we're doing the study is to have the, you know.
Better information.
An appropriate understanding of what compression should be.
I feel like this is recognizing that there's issues and that we're taking steps to get to what we need to get to, to have the information we need to make good decisions. Not just for them, not just for this particular situation, but for the entire organization.
I think we could easily get equally agitated about any individual position within the entire county. And, yeah, it's, I really, I'm just so uncomfortable with us proceeding, like I think I said before, I would, my instinct is to do nothing now. And I think this is a compromise. I think this is a reasonably close compromise, but my instinct is to say that, hey, this is data which I'm not a hundred percent confident in. I spent a day looking at it. I mean, I sat down eating a burrito staring at this stuff over lunch trying to understand it, but I can't say that I, that I'm fully comfortable with it and making a decision, you know, thinking that I'm therefore in a position to, to make a final decision on this, it just doesn't meet my standards from what I have to know.
So you're going to go with the current board approved?
No, I'm going to go with the administrative proposal. I think that it's a reasonable, reasonable compromise.
Why? Why do you feel it's a reasonable compromise? Because it just barely goes up to a few hundred dollars on your whole thing? How is that a compromise?
No, I didn't sure, understand the question.
It's just such a, it is pretty much doing nothing, administrative proposal. It's not a reasonable compromise. It's doing nothing. I mean, a slight adjustment.
It's fifteen hundred for old probation commander, a little over a thousand for patrol sergeants.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I, this whole situation that we, we lost the arbitration and we were, the taxpayers are now stuck with this six, six, six raise and the massive leap frog from where we were is a very difficult element for the county to to be charged. And I, like I said, I've gone from being absolutely livid about that, the results of that and how it occurred down to, I'm not going to blame or punish the non-represented group because of it.
Right. And so I think we've all committed that we will make these salaries competitive. And I'm saying, when I have the data, so I know what they have to be changed to, to make them competitive.
Even though you know that their current level is low.
I don't know. I think, I think I heard from staff that they're confident that this one is low, but I haven't seen data yet to even back that up. I have one window into this and that window, you know, that's what we see here.
Well, would you at least entertain approving the four percent and the eight percent?
I, I entertain that, yeah.
I would support that as well. In fact, I think.
But, but I would have to then see these numbers. We have to redo the math. I, I want to see these, these spreadsheets updated before approving it.
Because you think in changing back to a percentage, which is what we've already approved, remember?
Yep.
So changing back to a percentage, you're feeling might tip the scale on the cost where you would say no.
I haven't yet seen where, given this data, which is the only data we have, I have to see where they, that, where those numbers come in in terms of, of the salary comparisons and the compression. So I want to make sure that we haven't broken something in the process of doing that.
I mean, that's pretty easy to do.
Yep.
And there's only four spreadsheets right here.
Yeah.
I don't think there are math.
Well, I, I did, I did two of them just to check and I saw the numbers weren't crazy off. But I, I didn't run it through and see, I did the average instead of the min and the max and.
Right.
I'm going to make a comment. I understand why we would go, we just fixed the amount from the incentives because as was pointed out, that way it would be the same for everyone, no matter where you are on the scale. And Sheriff proposed that we do it, keep it to the same for everyone, just proposing to keep it the same for everyone. So I support that amount that we could have on there, two fifty and four hundred a month. And I know it's, it's not getting two of our groups in all likelihood, but it could be because of the information we do have, it pretty much shows that sergeants are down on comparative numbers and the under sheriff is down as well. I'm hoping that when we get to the end of this process, which is going to take through this year and then get us ready for the next year, we'll have the best numbers we can have to come up with proposals to get us in line with where we need to be. But time being, I'm okay with the administrative proposal less than.
So are you saying that you understand that the flat amount per month per certificate was proposed by the sheriff?
The amount proposed by the sheriff was that you be consistent or verbal. He proposed that you be consistent with how much you give for each people. Isn't that correct, Joe?
Yeah, the sheriff's proposed it four and eight for everybody and the other proposals are, are the same, they're consistent for all groups, three and a five or four, but they're applied equally across every, every position. And I support that and I know the sheriff supports that.
But that's not what the administrative proposal does.
It's two fifty and four hundred.
I'm understanding it's the, the two fifty, it's the flat pay, the two fifty per certification per month.
And four.
Compared to the four percent per month, which is proposed by the sheriff.
Yeah.
You're saying this is consistent across all positions, it's consistent.
It's consistent across all of the non-represented sheriff's department.
Sheriff wants it consistent across all positions.
Sure, right. I, I'm totally comfortable going to four and eight and leaving the rest of the administrative proposal with a change of four percent, eight percent. I would support that as well.
Say that again?
It'd be the administrative proposal, but instead of two fifty a month and four fifty a month, it goes to four percent, eight percent. That would be consistent across the entire sheriff's department.
You get rid of the flat pay.
Then, then all of the, all of the incentives or all of the incentive payment would be consistent. How it was calculated would be consistent across.
The amounts will be.
Sure, sure they will. But like Arthur said, they're going to vary a little bit, but I mean, you just kind of figure roughly and it's not going to be a huge change. But it's going to be, it's going to be a few thousand dollars difference.
Well, just a question.
It depends where they're at.
Do you know how many people this will affect? How many people are in intermediate and how many people are in advanced?
The four sergeants, so they all had.
The maximum could be.
Did he say that? I thought they were at advanced.
They don't say advanced, they all had intermediate.
Three have advanced, four are intermediate. Everybody else has.
So almost, so out of all of these positions, there's one person with intermediate, every other person is advanced. No one has zero, right?
So are you waiting on your big report that's coming at the end of the year to make a determina- determination around incentive pay?
My big report, smart report now?
Or is that hung up on that as well or can we?
It's everything, Karen. I mean, the whole point of doing this, to do this survey and understand across the entire organization, to be able to make decisions, not just on incentive pay or on certification pay, it's on everything.
I understand that, but is there information that will be coming that will help you determine whether four, eight percent or the two fifty or four hundred a month is going to be a better option?
I won't know until I see it. This doesn't necessarily tell me everything I want to know right now. There's pieces that I hope we get some input on what we're asking the proposals to look at.
Arthur, you look at the difference between the four, eight percent and the two fifty and four hundred?
I did in, in a couple of them. And it, it depends on the position, right? It's going to depend on the position. So I, I, like I said, I did, I did, I looked at the average of a few of them and then I looked at what two fifty or four hundred was compared to four and eight percent.
And why would you like, why do you like four, eight percent versus the two fifty and four hundred?
Well, I like it because on the one hand, it, it makes everything consistent as to how it's calculated from the representative and non-represented. I think that that adds, I think that makes, that adds some value from my perspective in having consistency. And I also think just from a, an equity standpoint for sure for the unrepresented, I mean, every coin that you would get as an increase would increase your, you, you, your incentive pay would also be increased. Where it's a flat fee, it doesn't have that, I understand it's a management tool, but I, you know.
You're looking at the other side.
Well, not entirely, yeah. I just, I think it just seems like it's clear. Otherwise, you've got to go back and renegotiate it. I mean, some of it's got to be renegotiated. It just is another component to be negotiated instead of looking at it. I don't know.
I don't think the numbers are huge. I mean, I don't think that's anything. So let me just give you some numbers just.
Something there.
Because the math is easy. I looked at sixty thousand dollars versus five thousand dollars a month. Four percent of that, let's have it here a second ago, is, is two hundred dollars. So four percent is actually less than two hundred fifty dollars per month at a sixty thousand dollar salary. And eight percent of five thousand a month is four hundred, so it's exactly the same. So sixty thousand dollars, right, the proposal of two hundred fifty and four hundred is more for the intermediate and the same for advanced.
Why, why are we even looking at these two different models? Why are we not seeing something consistent with the four and eight percent?
So you're saying vote the four and eight percent?
Yes. I feel that it.
Okay, I don't have a problem. I, I can support the admini- I mean, administrative proposal with the change of four and eight percent is what I'm comfortable with. I would be comfortable either way, but given the discussion, I think having the consistency across both adds enough value to make a change.
And what I said, I, I still hold, I think I'm comfortable with that, but I would want to see the spreadsheet worked out. I want to see if there are any unintended consequences of that, just because I'm, I'm not third person.
And I guess my whole thing was I'm with Arthur in the, I'm more comfortable doing nothing right now until, until we see.
Well, then let's see enough.
But I would, I would, I don't think it's that big of a change to go to four eight and four and eight percent.
I'm ninety percent sure I'm going to be fine with it when I see the, when I see the spreadsheet worked out, but I haven't seen it and.
Yes.
I just, I don't, I'm not comfortable voting yes on something that I'm not sure of.
Sure. I'm okay with that too. Okay, the numbers, who it is. Sounds like you've got less than you're sure.
You're doing real well there, Bob.
I'm going to announce my resignation.
I'm, I'm okay to, I would go ahead and do it now, do the four and eight percent. I don't think it's going to change.
So I think a three, you sort of, you can go ahead and vote that and.
Grab a motion.
Well, I, I think I'd like to see the numbers just to, Arthur's got nervous. I mean, I don't know. Can we, can we support it tentatively pending? We got to do this from meeting.
Do you guys want to know what the cost differential is between a flat cert pay per month department-wide?
No.
And a four and eight percent.
I want to see the spreadsheet with the, with the four and eight percent in the.
I'm not concerned about the cost. I'm concerned about the various percentages. I want to see where those come out.
And I just feel like we're looking through a straw right now.
We're doing what?
Looking through a straw.
We're looking through a straw.
I think, you know, these are not normal times right now. They're not normal employment relation times that we're historically used to. And the different agencies that I'm a part of, I see internal chaos taking place over some of these elements. And so I, maybe I'm overly sensitive to that because one agency I'm working with, there are folks internally completely at odds with one another over questions of equality and pay structure and it's debilitating the agency. And so I think I'm more, I find myself to be more concerned lately with the internal morale and structures inside the department and how that will continue. And we're asking them to wait an entire year before we address this issue that we clearly openly recognize this is a significant issue. And I think that maybe five years ago or maybe a few years ago when we were having this conversation, that might be a reasonable expectation. And my concern is that that is not the environment right now.
But that's true in every department in the county and I don't know if the sheriff's department is actually the one that I have the biggest concern about. I, I think we have bigger issues in other departments. So we're looking through a straw.
Well, and then you can contract close.
That's what we're going to do.
The mic dropped down, I think.
Yeah, I know. I don't know what's going on with it.
That, that's what we're proposing to do is to look comprehensively at the whole organization. So to go back to Arthur's point in the very beginning, is it feels like we're looking at one little piece of it when we've got this, the whole organization. at one little piece of it when we've got this, the whole organization to look at, which is what we're about to do. So making the judgment here is, to me, saying that the departments who have similar issues, that we're just looking at sheriff's department right now and we're not going to look at you until we're done with this whole process, which feels less fair to me.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you're even solving the problem.
No.
If I were an employee, I would share much more about the total number of my compensation, which we're not getting to the sheriff's proposal, than I would about whether it was a four or eight percent versus a hundred twenty-five per month or two, or, uh, or four, you know, two, two hundred fifty per month or four hundred per month. I, I, I don't think, I, I understand your concern about morale. I don't think that what you're saying is, is going to fix the morale. I think people are going to be just as upset. It, whatever we do here, unless we take the sheriff's proposal at face value and simply pass that along, people are going to be disappointed. They're going to be very angry and we're going to have to answer for whatever we do. I'd rather answer for something I have data for.
I'll make a motion. Uh, so that we, uh, I don't know exactly what we're doing, accepting or modifying or changing.
It's your motion.
Well, uh, I'll make a motion that we adopt the administrative proposal for compensation of the unrepresented, uh, numbers in the sheriff's department, um, with the changes that the incentive, uh, intermediate pay will be four percent and the incentive advance pay will be eight percent. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It did?
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I just feel like, uh, we've been, we've been waiting on addressing this for a while and I'd like to take care of it right now. I think that, you know, seeing the numbers would make me feel more comfortable, but I, I don't anticipate that they are. I, I think it's a very small amount and not getting impacted by it substantially. Um, but I, you know, and I just, I just think I'd like to move this forward and take care of it to move on. And I look forward to seeing that study so we can actually start addressing this across the whole country.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think this at all solves the problem. Um, it, it's not, it's not moving the needle, even going to the four percent and eight percent, um, in the direction that I know that patrol sergeants want. Um, but if this gets us past this, until we can go to have this full study and actually be able to look at it, I don't think it's a big enough change to be a huge budget. In fact, I know it's not. Then, um, I'll go along with it. I just, I, I don't feel like doing any of this right now is solving the problem. And we've got a lot of problems we've got to solve that are much bigger across the organization. So I feel like we're tilting a little, this conversation.
Other discussion?
Uh, yeah. Um, well, I got one here. Who are you saying first? Will you change my mind?
Um, I have significant concerns about the employment market and the current status of employment, the, the staff level with the county, the exodus currently taking place because folks are finding higher paying jobs within our region. And I think that this, um, you know, waiting a year is going to be too long and we will lose staff and it takes years to recover in this particular department because of training requirements.
I guess I'm still stuck on, like, what I'm looking at is not a big number change. You, you think that going to four percent and eight percent is going to be the difference in some of the
Oh, no, I mean, it's bigger there, but the administrative proposal didn't go far enough.
But, but going to four percent, eight percent doesn't really even move the needle. That's what I'm saying.
But at least there's some good space of matching what's going on there instead of creating this other additional model that is random.
That's the only reason that, uh, I can see to going to four percent and eight percent is that it matches with the union goal, but it does not address the salary, uh, portion of it. And I, I just don't, I just don't think that it does anything in the, I, I don't think it does anything in the morale department. So I, I understand what you're saying, Bob.
Well, without a good reason to have this other model of two fifty slash four hundred, it makes us not, you know, introduce a separate model inside the same department.
Well, same model, you got it.
Which happily
Right. The difference is it's the current model. It's a modification of the, the current salary.
We currently have a pro, what do you mean?
We banned, we banned the flat rate for, that's what we used to be until we just went to the three percent, five percent, and then we went to four percent.
Yes, the, the Bobby Bass part makes no explanation to me, makes no sense to me. Um, anyway, no, I, I will, um, support the motion, um, because we have this data coming and we'll be able to make knowledgeable decisions about appropriate salary levels in conjunction with our prior commitment to bringing salaries to a more appropriate level regardless of what that does to our service levels. Well, not regardless, but with consideration that that may even encourage service loss or even position loss. And I am still committed to that. I just think that waiting a year is going to have detrimental effects.
You're still waiting a year. Arthur, we're still waiting a year.
Comments?
Yeah. Trying to think of the right way to say this. Uh, I think when we started this discussion, we were taking a principled policy position that we are going to do our best to treat all employees fairly and the same. And there was a specific issue as a result of the binding arbitration that we needed to address. Uh, and I'm comfortable addressing that issue. I'm not comfortable with where we're leading things now because we make it sound like our attempt here is to solve the problem in this department, which goes against that policy position that we've taken, which I believe is principled. So I can't, you know, I think we, you know, I, I'm really disappointed the discussion's gone this way because I think we, we, we brought out an issue that we didn't intend to address. And we're now making it seem like we are attempting to address. And I think people would be more disappointed than they would have been if we simply said, hey, we're not dealing with this now. We're fixing this, this corner case and moving on, uh, so that we can do this full analysis and you have our commitment. We are really working on addressing this. Uh, and I, I, you know, I, I don't think people quite understand that when we do this full analysis, where we're going to come to is we're going to decide we can't afford things. And it may be some of these positions that we can't afford and we're going to have to make those decisions. And I want to have data to back up my decisions at that point. So I, I'm not at all comfortable going forward now and making it sound like we're fixing the problem, fixing our compensation problem in this, I'm not going to say department, it's only part of a department, to non-represented law enforcement. This proposal doesn't fix it and I'm not comfortable saying anything that implies that it does. Uh, and I understand that this is a morale issue. I think we just made it worse in this whole, uh, in this whole discussion. But I can't, uh, yeah. So in terms of changing it to four and eight percent, I would be willing to do that after number one, seeing the numbers. And number two, saying that we know that doesn't address the core problem. So if I can't see the numbers, then if I just learned a long time ago that, uh, I don't, if I haven't had a chance to analyze something, I don't, I don't vote yes on it. I would be voting no. Sorry, that was long.
Okay. I, I agree that this does not solve the problem that we have numbers before today that aren't perfect, but they lend to the idea that we believe in that, uh, a couple of our positions, including patrol sergeants, particularly are under where they need to be. What we're doing here tonight is not going to solve this, but, uh, we're working towards a process to solve this, not only for this department, for, look at other departments and to make things fair and equal. What we've, uh, proposed tonight is to change to a four percent, eight percent incentive or, uh, four percent for intermediate and eight percent for advanced certificates. And I just don't see how getting more numbers, but if, the ones we look at are starting close, I don't think it's going to make any difference. So, uh, I'm happy with the discussion that we had tonight. I know it had, it needed to be had. And, uh, it's hard to do this in open session. Generally, when you're talking about these negotiations, you don't do them in open session. But, uh, at least the public notion now are difficult and just for us to come up with conclusions.
I think that it's important for public and, and organizations to understand that it's not isolated to this department. It's not isolated to these positions. It's, we have these issues across our, all of our departments and we have to deal with them. So this is, to me, it, this is semantics. I mean, the four percent, eight percent flat rate, it's not moving the needle. So I understand that we need, you know, this, this came up and we've had to talk about it. I just don't think that it, again, I think we're looking through a straw right now.
You ready for a vote? Oh, okay. Mr. Choplin?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes. Next up on our work session, action item, uh, HR Energy Council. I've, I've lost my computer, so.
It died. The lens probably gets loose.
Turn the crank, pass it up.
So I'm going to motion to approve the policy and program statement. I will make a motion to approve the policy and program statement divided by the head of our energy council to be used to be forward and then the unit of red.
I will second that. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Commissioner Choplin?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next up, executive session. Jeff, are we still doing all the
Yes.
Both labor and property?
Yes.
Okay. This time we're going to, uh, close our regular session. Uh, Jeff, before I do this, are we going to potentially come back into regular session or not?
I don't think so.
No, okay. This time I'm going to close the regular meeting and we're going to go into executive session for labor negotiations under ORS 192.6602D, labor negotiations and property, ORS 192.6602E, property. This time I'm going to give Heidi time to shut down the videos and, uh, we'll go into executive session.